Go ahead and get started. First, I want to welcome everybody here today. I know some of you came early because there was an inaccuracy in the letter.
Randy, did you call me back? Quick question. Do we have to listen to comments from people that do not live in the city of Stevie?
So let's.
Okay, did thanks. So, thank you, sir.
Okay. We are going to, sorry. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I apologize for those of you who came early. What we are going to do is I believe the bulk of you are here to talk about the Cedar case number six on Cedar, case number six, item 004, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to pull that up to the top of the agenda so that we can hopefully kind of get some of you guys going so somebody, so y'all can sit and not have to stand awkwardly as long as possible. Okay. So what we're going to do before we get going is I'm going to first open up a general discussion from citizens. Now, what I want to say here is if you wish to speak about a particular item, I will have, I will open up a formal discussion during those items. So if you want to speak on the Cedar Creek or Cedar Street or any of these other items, it would make sense to wait until we get to that item. That said, is there anybody who just has any sort of general comments that they would like to make? All right. Then the first item that we have on our agenda is to consider the approval of April 17th minutes.
So moved.
All those in favor of approving the April 17th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So what we're going to do now is we're going to begin with item number six, case number RZ 2024-004. Applicant Landon Darwin, representing Rock Creek Property Number One LLC, is requesting a rezone of property located at Zero West Cedar Street, being parcel R 78345 of the H.C. Hudson survey, A 342 of the City of Stevensville, Erez County, Texas, from single-family R1 and retail and commercial B2 to R3 multifamily district. Now, I believe that we have Steve Killen. There he is.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Killen, can you please give us an update on this?
Yes, ma'am. Please give me one minute to scroll down to that case. Okay. Thank you for letting me be attending this meeting virtually. I'm in Round Rock at a TML training and if I miss any of it, then I don't get the credentials. So, sorry for the conflict. The property currently that we are discussing now, this is a 50-acre parcel. It currently has split zoning of residential and retail, commercial. The future land use is dedicated or designated as commercial. The rezone for R3 is to allow for an approved or proposed purpose-built student housing development, and the current site plan estimates that to be at 1,960 beds. I believe you referenced that we've had several letters of opposition, and I believe we have a room of people that want to make sure that their voices are heard. We've had, by my count, 11 letters of opposition and two letters of support, and those have been forwarded over to the commissioners for review. And Madam Chair, I have gone through and read each of those letters and have kind of made notes of some of the comments brought forward. And I just wanted to address some of the issues of concern, one being largely related to density. The density for multifamily properties is limited to 24 units per acre, 24 units per acre. If we use that 24 units times 50 acres, that comes out to 1,200 dwelling units, and if any of those dwelling units were two-room units alone, it would exceed the 1,960 that we're talking about on the site plan. Now, I do want to point out that this site plan is based on best-case scenario. We have not gotten into the development review process as of yet, and when we begin that development review process, we'll be looking at things such as drainage and detention, access to and from the property. This will, this property is automatically going to trigger a traffic impact analysis, and that traffic impact analysis will determine what type of improvements have to be made to the surrounding roadways to service that community. So density was one of those concerns. Traffic was another concern mentioned. Noise and light was also a concern brought forward. Noise is addressed through one of the code ordinances enforced by the police department. And our light, when we do lighting reviews for these developments, the lighting glare has to meet certain criteria, and the lighting is to be directed away from adjacent properties. There's been concern about if there is an adequate buffer between the R1 homes and the existing or what the proposed development will be. There will be a buffer, landscape buffer along Cedar Street, and the developer has even expressed some interest in not allowing traffic to enter onto Cedar Street from the development, but that is going to be determined upon review and largely determined by the fire department as far as emergency access into and out of the property. The question about the infrastructure and if the city would be funding that infrastructure, generally as the development occurs, the, any type of improvements at public infrastructure, streets, water, sewer, all those costs are passed on to the developer as part of the We did have this property before the Board of Adjustment last week, and there were, of course, there were variances requested for parking, height, and unrelated persons, limited to three per unit. The Board of Adjustment granted the height increase from 35 foot to 40 foot. This is going to allow for three-story construction of units. It will not go to four. It's at three stories. They have higher ceilings inside the units, so they needed the 40-foot to make the construction work for the aesthetics that they're looking for. The parking, they had requested a parking reduction to 1.1 spaces for student bed. We require 1.5. Board of Adjustment agreed to 1.22, which will affect their site plan as well. So again, this is somewhat fluid on what you're seeing before you tonight. And then lastly, the variance to request more than three unrelated persons per unit was denied. And so these apartments can be built, but they will be expected to meet that requirement or whatever the requirement may be when this is completed. And so even if they build a five-unit, a five-bed dwelling unit, only three unrelated persons could be in that particular unit as long as some of the others were related. And if there's questions to that, I can certainly try and answer it. There were comments made about parties and disruptive behavior and that it's not suitable to the area. We certainly recognize that it's not exactly what a lot of people would want next to their single-family residential homes. However, we do have a strong need for housing within the community, and we know that charlton housing is, the growth of charlton is exceeding what we are able to provide, and that is causing a lot of our charlton students to have to enter into our single-family neighborhoods and rent homes across the community, and we recognize that that's displacing some of our residents as well. So this project could help us meet some of those needs of the community, and we certainly recognize the concerns of the adjacent property owners. So this is for a straight rezone. The developer did not ask for a consideration of plan development. It was the developer's decision or desire to request the Board of Adjustment variances, and then if those variances were granted, to move forward with straight zoning through a rezone request for a R3. And so with those variances that were granted, if the rezone is approved, then the developer will make a decision from this point as we work through the development review process and then determine if he moves forward with the project. Again, the site plan is a target at this point, but I want to make certain that it's clear that the 1,960 units has not been fully approved, so that number may decrease as we look at the drainage and detention requirements for the property. I know the developer is here tonight or at your location and has a short presentation, and if there are no questions, well, first let me just say I'd be glad to answer any questions of the commission, and if not, I would turn it back to the commission for the testimony from the developer. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
How would we verify the part about the unrelated residents? How would we, how would that be enforced?
Steve, could you hear that?
Yes, is that from the?
That's from Justin.
Yes. Justin, that's a very difficult ordinance to enforce. I can tell you that from experience with other cities. It's a difficult ordinance to enforce. That ordinance exists for other properties across the city, and there's even case law from higher courts on the legality of that. Basically, it's site visits. In other cities that I've worked for, we go as far as checking license plates, driver's licenses, lease agreements. It's a difficult process, but if that were the case, we would, you know, exercise due diligence to try to either determine that a violation was occurring or not occurring and proceed from there with the legal tools that we have available if a violation did exist.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Steve, what are the access points to the property? I see a defined one on the south side on the Cedar, but on the north side, it's just showing one half of a future Harbin Road being developed.
Yes, sir. Harbin, I meant to mention that earlier. Thank you for asking me. Harbin Road with this project will be extended into the development. Caporale stopped just outside of their project according to the future land use or future thoroughfare plan that is on the comp plan for consideration later tonight. Cedar Street, there is currently an access onto Cedar Street, but as I've previously mentioned, the developer would entertain removing that access, maybe making a controlled access only for the fire department through some type of gate entry feature as we move forward. All of this will be determined again by the traffic impact analysis and the assessment by our fire marshal and the reviewing team of city staff. But one point I wanted to also make, if I may digress a little bit back to the previous question. Again, the more than three unrelated persons was not a variance that was approved, so this property will be addressed just as any other property across the city on the enforcement of that unrelated person's provision. We have not, the city has not granted anything in excess of what's currently on the, or within the code ordinances.
The traffic study, where would it be focused? Would it be just access to the south loop or would it be as far as their destination to the campus?
It's a concentric circle. I believe it stretches out for anywhere from half a mile to one mile, depending on the size of the project. Just Leslie, I don't have that in front of me at the moment, but it's defined by the type of use and the density of the use.
Okay.
Any questions for Steve?
If an R3 is approved, is there a possibility that Harbin would not be extended to meet the project?
That, that extension of Harbin, I believe, is going to be necessary for the success of this project, either for the city or the developer. And I believe the developer has been pretty adamant that that extension is going to be basically a determining factor for this project. So I have full belief that that is going to occur.
And any other work to Harbin Drive as far as north of the loop? Would that also be on the developer within the traffic study boundaries or would it be on the city after that?
Extension across the other property, of course, we'll be currently working with other property owners on the right-of-way. The cost of that, developer has to do a certain cost, the development of the street, which is maximum 45 feet, and then anything beyond that on other properties, I believe, will fall back on the city, which is, again, part of our thoroughfare plan, and then we, I believe, will capture that as other developments occurred across that other parcel. Again, all of this can be subject to developer agreements with the city council if the council chooses.
Any more questions for Steve? All right. Thanks, Steve. I'm going to go ahead and call up now the developer, Mr. Landon Darwin.
Good evening, commissioners. I want to make sure before I start, I've got a slideshow Tina that was sent us. Okay. That way, everybody in the room can see it. And then does everyone have a copy? I have a copy, a paper copy, if the commissioners need one of the entire presentation.
Sorry.
You're fine. Y'all do have a copy, correct? Sorry, I just want to make sure.
It was included in our.
Okay. My name is Landon Darwin. I'm with Lackland Holdings. We're a residential land developer based in Fort Worth, Texas. We were founded in 1991 by our owner and CEO, Tim Fleet. Over the last 33 years, we've done, you know, over 250 different development projects, all ranging, all types of different residential developments, single-family housing, apartment complexes, and, you know, pretty much all of the above. Specific to apartment complexes, since that's what we're here talking about tonight, we've built 43 different apartment complexes across North Texas over that 33-year period and currently own and manage eight apartment complexes today. So that's an important thing to note because, you know, we, a lot of apartment owners of this size, you know, typically have third parties that come in and manage it, but at Lackland, all of the managers, all the onsite folks, all the security folks, everybody's a Lackland employee. It's important to us that our tenants are, you know, safe, comfortable, and happy with where they live, and that's, you know, something that we take a lot of pride in and will continue to do on this project and others in the future. So with this particular project we're talking about, the next slide. Steve went through this. This is more or less just a repetition of what he just gave everybody. This is a property that's currently zoned R1, single-family, with some retail, commercial B2, and we're asking for a straight zoning to multifamily R3 with the variances he discussed. And this, once again, this is all intentionally purpose-built student housing for charlton state university. And then if you flip over, I just want to make sure everybody in the room knows what the site we're talking about. So this is just a picture of zoomed out, and then the next slide, just a picture a little closer. So charlton university is about a mile from this site, so this is as far as finding a good project for student housing that, you know, the city, that the university desperately needs. We fill, you know, with the lack of infill opportunities between here and the university, this is, with Harbin Road, is good of a location for this project that's available in the city, which is obviously why we're here today, asking for the rezone.
Could you, speaking up a little bit?
Yeah. Sorry, is this mic? I didn't know if y'all could hear. So to the next slide, it's our concept plan. I believe everybody's seen this by now. We've got it here in front of you. One thing that I wanted to just walk through with the commission, because at Board of Adjustments, there seemed to be some, you know, hesitancy about this being something that was rushed through and that we haven't spent a lot of time thinking about how we're going to develop this site and how we got to this, to this moment here before you asking for a rezone. So I just want to, you know, kind of walk through the process. You know, we started this journey, actually, one of our owners, partners, was telling us the story about coming to charlton with his daughter freshman year, trying to find housing, you know, like a lot of people. He kind of assumed he could come up here, you know, the week before, two weeks before, find some student, you know, find an apartment, whatever it may be, and he was pretty shocked to find, when he got to Stevensville, that there was nothing, you know? He had to make lots of calls, frantic calls, and, you know, she, nobody likes to have to tell their kid they're not going to get the apartment or the house they want to rent. They just got to take what they can get because that's what's available, and that was his experience. So that was our first, you know, story of hearing about this issue with student housing and housing in general in Stevensville, and that's what kind of sparked the interest in looking in the area and, you know, what could we do to potentially build something that would help with that problem? And so from there, we were able to put this property under contract, and that happened back in February. You know, your process from there is, you've got to go, first thing you do is go get a phase-one environmental, right? You've got to make sure that, you know, there's no issues with the site and any kind of contamination. You know, they do, all, pull all the reports, make sure nothing's ever been on the property. That shouldn't be there. Of course, that passed. And then the next, you know, 60 or so days, you're spending getting surveys, soil borings to make sure that the soil is capable of holding a structure of this size. You know, all these things are happening. That's a 60-to-90-day process. All the while, we're having meetings with the city, you know, we're talking about what our plans are, what we'd like to do. We're showing them concept plans, you know, we're going back and forth on what the city believes is a good project for this property and what, you know, will satisfy the need that the city has. So I just wanted to kind of walk through that process because I hated that that was the takeaway from some of the Board of Adjustment members, that this was something that was thrown together at the last minute. This has been, you know, a 90, 120-day process to get to this point. And obviously, what you have in front of you, Steve mentioned it, you know, this is just a high-level concept plan at where we're at today. This is not to say this will be the final thing. This is the best we've got with the information we have and the dialogue we've had with the city. And, you know, this plan, as we get further into the process, will change. You know, from here, you start hiring architects and engineers to zone in really, really deeply and get into a lot of detail on what this final product will look like. But I just wanted to go over a few highlights on the concept plan. So Steve mentioned, and I think this is one of the bigger topics and one of the bigger concerns, which is the connection to Cedar Street. And as he mentioned, you know, we would, we would prefer not to have it, but once again, where we're at in the process, we have not done that traffic impact study. And so until we have that study completed, we can't say or, you know, give any certainty as to whether or not that stub will be required. So in the interest of transparency to the commissioners, to the residents, to the community, we want to keep that there for now until we have absolute certainty that we can remove it. Our goal and our interest is to keep all of the traffic flowing to future Harbin Road. You know, most likely, that'll be a signalized, and that's another thing that the traffic impact study will determine is whether those are signals or how exactly we get people in and out of the site safely and efficiently. And Steve mentioned the emergency access. You know, if the study comes back and says you have to have some sort of stub, some sort of connection to Cedar Road, then we have, you know, we're going to work with the city, work with the fire department, police department, and see if just an emergency access would be acceptable. Because I think we agree with most folks that it would be better for everybody if we didn't have a access point on Cedar Street. So I just want to make sure that commissioners know that we agree with that sentiment, and it's our hope that we don't have to end up actually connecting to Cedar. Trying to think of some other. Steve mentioned the density, yes. So our density for R3 would be 24 units per acre. This is approximately a 50-acre site, and we're well under that. I think we're a little over 13 and a half units per acre with this layout. So there's, we're far below what the R3 zoning will allow. If you'll, sorry, go to the next slide. These are just some highlights. So yeah, once again, 672 units, 1,960 beds at this high-level concept plan stage. He mentioned about the parking. So if you don't mind flipping to the next slide, and I know you're not supposed to do this, but we're going to go back and forth for a second. So the parking, we went to the Board of Adjustments initially seeking 1.1 spaces per bed, and we came to that, we came for that ask because after doing some research on some other college towns, you know, what parking, and I know that's a very sensitive subject here in Stevensville due to some past projects and without naming names, I totally understand. It, yeah. So we wanted to come in and ask for something that, you know, was in line with what other cities who have large student populations are doing and in line with what typical student housing projects have. The number we came back with was 1.1. That was, you know, across the board, from talking to different builders of student housing, 1.1 was a, was a good number, and then looking at what other cities. This is not to say this will be the final thing. This is the, the best we've got with the information we have and the dialogue we've had with the city. And, you know, this, this plan, as we get further into the process, will change. You know, from here, you start hiring architects and engineers to zone in really, really deeply and get into a lot of detail on what this final product will look like. But I just wanted to go over a few highlights on the concept plan. So Steve mentioned, and I think this is one of the bigger topics and, and one of the bigger concerns, which is the connection to Cedar Street. And as he mentioned, you know, we would, we would prefer not to have it. But once again, where we're at in the process, we have not done that traffic impact study. And so until we have that study completed, we can't say, or, you know, give any certainty as to whether or not that stub will be required. So in the interest of transparency to the Commissioners, to, to the residents, to the community, we, we want to keep that there for now until we have absolute certainty that we can remove it. Our goal and our interest is to keep all of the traffic flowing to future Harbin Road. You know, most likely, that'll be a signalized, and that's another thing that the traffic impact study will determine is whether those are signals or how exactly we get people in and out of the site safely and efficiently. And Steve mentioned the emergency access. You know, if, if the study comes back and says you have to have some sort of stub, some sort of connection to Cedar Road, then we have, you know, we're going to work with the city, work with the fire department, police department, and see if just an emergency access would be acceptable. Because I think we agree with the most folks that it would be better for everybody if we didn't have a access point on Cedar Street. So I just want to make sure that Commissioners know that we, we agree with that sentiment, and it's our hope that we don't have to end up actually connecting to Cedar. Trying to think of some other. Steve mentioned the, the density, yes. So our density for R3 would be twenty-four units per acre. This is approximately a fifty-acre site, and we're, we're well under that. I think we're a little over thirteen and a half units per acre with this layout. So there's, there's, we're far below what the R3 zoning will allow. Sorry, go to the next slide. These are just some highlights. So yeah, once again, six-hundred-and-seventy-two units, nineteen-hundred-and-sixty beds at this high-level concept plan stage. He mentioned about the parking. So if you don't mind flipping to the next slide, and I know you're not supposed to do this, but we're going to go back and forth for a second. So the parking, we went to the Board of Adjustments initially seeking one-point-one spaces per bed. And we came to that, we came for that ask because after doing some research on some other college towns, you know, what parking, and I know that's a very sensitive subject here in Stevensville due to some past projects and without naming names, I totally understand. It, it, yeah. So we, we wanted to come in and ask for something that, you know, was in line with what other cities who have large student populations are doing and in line with what typical student housing projects have. The number we came back with was one-point-one. That was, you know, across the board. From talking to different builders of student housing, one-point-one was a, was a good number. And then looking at what other cities have in their ordinances, and these are all parking ordinances specific to student housing. So this is not just their regular multifamily zoning. This is their student housing because these cities obviously have very designated zoning for student housing projects. So we didn't get the one-point-one, but BOA was acceptable to one-point-two-two. So we, you know, we feel like we're above and beyond what is considered standard across, you know, multiple cities with the large student populations. And then the other, the other variance that we were granted was the height, and that truly was an aesthetic. We, you know, we did that with the contingency that this is not to add a four-story. At thirty-five feet, talking to some architects, that puts you right on the line of being able to not do nine-foot ceilings, which I think we all agree look a little nicer and aesthetically pleasing than your eight-foot ceilings. At the thirty-five, there was no chance we could do the nine-foot ceilings, but at forty, we believe we'll be able to do that, give the buildings a nicer, you know, more open feel. So that was purely aesthetic, and I, you know, BOA didn't seem to have any issues, so they, they granted us that variance as well. And then some other things on the concept plan. So we have a, we're planning for a clubhouse in a pool area, and we intentionally have that planned at this stage at the northeast end of the site, as far away from the residential properties as we could get. Obviously, we all know with students that that's going to be an attractant, and we want to try to keep that as far away from, from the residential parts around us as we can. And then we also intentionally have all the pools in one location. I know we got that question at BOA as kind of a, why all one spot? And that's, you know, that's just a safety and a, and a maintenance decision because having them all in one location's, you know, better for everybody, easier to keep watch. Once again, yeah, Harbin and Caporal are what we anticipate the main access points. If we're able to, if the TIA will allow it, and Health and Safety will allow it, we will, we will avoid that connection to Cedar. And then some of the concerns from some of the residents that live along Cedar, you know, were buffers and, and ways of trying to mitigate their exposure to the property. We've talked to several of them, and they're all, you know, we've told all of them and happy to say here that we'll do landscaping boundaries and fencing, whatever we can do to, to work with them to try to, to make that more palatable. And so if you'll, two slides over. And please feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions as I go through this. So the, you know, the why, I think we all know the why. The why is pretty obvious. Obviously, Tarleton State has seen a tremendous amount of growth over the last few years. And conversations with them, you know, they keep breaking records year after year for enrollment. You see on the slide there that they're up forty-four percent on their student population in Stevieville since 2010. They're currently projecting, you know, eleven-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventeen students for 2025, and then, you know, about another thousand students for 2030. So I talked to Dr. Garza at the enrollment office, and he said that pretty much every projection they've ever had for the on-campus in Stevensville student population, they missed. It's always been higher than they projected. So they, they have their numbers out there where they anticipate enrollment to be in the very near future, but he seemed to put the caveat that they can't, they always seem to underestimate what that number is. So it's not only, you know, as Steve mentioned, we're aware of all the, the issues with student housing. It's, it's, you know, it's not, it's, it's a good thing, but it's not getting better because this, the university is going to continue to grow, and they have plenty of aspiration to do so. And then the next slide. So these are, and I, once again, I know I'm preaching to the choir. I'm sure everyone in this room knows about every single one of these things on the list, but I just want to make sure, you know, it's understood that Tarleton is continuing to invest in Stevensville. They're continuing to invest in the campus here. They've had $260 million that's already been approved and deployed. All that is going to attract more and more students and more and more people to campus. You know, obviously, the move to Division One was a huge step. And then in 2022, they were elevated to an R2 research status, which would just bring in more dollars for research and allow for, you know, more, more to happen, more students to be attracted to Stevensville, to the university. And then, yeah, and I, I don't know if I'm, once again, maybe preaching to the choir here, but they have a forward 2030 planning that's got, you know, their goals and aspirations, and, and they all fall in line with continuing to grow, continuing to provide a high-quality education. I encourage anyone who hasn't read it to go read it. Once again, you know, there, there's, there's no anticipation that the university is going to quit investing and that student population's going to flatline or, or decline. This is something that's just going to continue to increase, which is all great things. But, you know, one of the things that I'm sure anyone who's sent a kid to college or paid for it themselves knows, you know, is tuition and housing, right? Those are the two big line items. And one of the core tenets, and I've got a, a picture here from the, the website, is an educational opportunity that's affordability. And that's a big tent, you know, a big foundational legacy of Tarleton is providing kids with a high-quality education at affordable price. And a big component of that affordability, of course, for any kid going to school, is the cost of housing. And so as the, as the issue with student housing exacerbates, and there's less and less of it and more and more of them, you know, there's only one natural reaction to that, which is the cost of their housing will continue to climb. So I know it's important to the university. It's important to, to hold to the roots of giving, you know, every kid a chance at a good education at a reasonable price. So one takeaway I had from Board of Adjustments is I know there's a lot of support for Tarleton in this town. Obviously, that's very clear, but, you know, there's still Stevensville, right? There's still what's happening here outside of Tarleton. And although they're incredibly interconnected and there's, you can't have one conversation without the other, but it is important to understand what a project like this does more than just the university. And really, it's, it's a story of housing. You know, I was fortunate, and I know y'all have on your agenda to go over the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, and all that was in the, the public meeting packet. There was an incredible amount of statistics. There's been a lot of research done on the city, what the city needs to continue to thrive and to grow. And, you know, fortunate, I guess, that I showed up on the, the P&amp;Z where that was there readily available. So I'll readily admit, I ripped off some of these charts from that, that report, but they're really eye-opening. I mean, as you can see in the bullet point, since 2010, population of Stevensville's grown twenty-two percent. Population of the students, as I mentioned earlier, has grown forty-four percent. But yet, the housing inventory at the same, during the same period, has only grown fifteen percent. And something that was also pretty eye-opening in that report, not to be a spoiler, but, you know, at this stage, most of Stevensville's housing is now rent-or-occupied. And I think we all know those are rental properties for student housing. And really, the big, the most eye-opening chart, which I've got up here, is the median household listing price. So it's kind of hard to read for the crowd, but that, what that chart's showing you is since 2020, the median price of a home listed in Stevensville has nearly doubled, while median income has remained mostly flat. And that, you know, is clear to me as, as a sign that the housing inventory, single-family homes that should be purchased by people, you know, here in Stevensville for their first home to become homeowners, they're now competing against investors, buying up single-family homes for student housing. And it's, it's, you know, when you're renting it out by the bed for a four-bedroom, your young couple trying to get their first home can't compete with that. And that, to me, is, is the real story about this project as it interconnects to the city, is this is an opportunity to put students in student housing versus in single-family housing. If you'll flip to the next slide, just some more data to kind of show the need. So the chart on your left, that, that is a bar graph of the student housing available in the current population. And it's, and you can see the huge gap. So right now, there's about sixty-five-hundred student housing units, and there's about ten-thousand-five-hundred Tarleton students. So as we're sitting here today, we've, there's about a four-thousand-bed shortage. That's, you know, not taking into account future growth. So I know a project of this size has some residents concerned, but frankly, this project doesn't even solve today's problem, much less the student housing that's going to be needed for the future as Tarleton continues to invest in the community and into the university. So, you know, I think this chart, and then the chart on your right, that's just more projections of Tarleton's growth. You know, that's, once again, straight out of the Comprehensive Report. And, and it's just, once again, the, the university's going to continue to invest and grow, and that's going to continue to exacerbate the problem for housing for everybody else here in Stevensville. So projects like this will go a long way in opening the amount of housing that other folks can, can buy and afford. You know, a project, you know, nineteen-hundred beds, I mean, that's approximately thirteen-hundred three-bed homes that may no longer need it, be needed for student housing, that they'll be in, you know, a student housing apartment versus a single-family home. And then one thing to mention, just so everyone knows, so I did, speaking with enrollment, they are building some student housing, but right now, the projects they have in, in the process are about a thousand beds. So even if that project came online tomorrow, you still have about a three-thousand-bed shortage at today's student population. And then just last slide, and I'll, I'll quit talking. Just some of your other typical benefits, you know, the extension of Harbin and Caporal, that's just going to continue, you know, as development comes for more single-family housing, more commercial development, grocery stores, all those things. You know, this is just in support of that. Harbin Road is, you know, a major thoroughfare road on the, on the master plan, and our project will extend that out further to open up more opportunity for development for other properties in the area. And then, you know, just increasing property tax revenue, obviously, you know, that's something that I know is a town that's growing. You know, everyone's sensitive to tax rate, and projects like this will continue to bring in tax dollars and hopefully avoid the need to raise taxes to help cover city services and the like. And then kind of the last point is, you know, really, a project like this puts, once again, students where they need to be in student housing. It addresses a huge need in the city that's growing, within a university that's growing. And, you know, obviously, that's, I'm sure has mixed feelings amongst the community, what's happening at Tarleton and all the growth they've seen. But, you know, one of the fun things about being, I'm a Red Raider, so you know, to excuse me, but I lived in Lubbock for a long time. And, you know, that's one of the great things about being in a college town, right, is having some common unity behind a university. And I think that Stevensville's in an incredible position to leverage the growth and the investment from Tarleton into, you know, more than just a college town, more than just a place to come to school. A place to come to school, get out of school, get a job, stay here, you know, build a, build a life, have a family here. And all those things, you know, require housing, things that projects like this and, and other student housing projects can help, can help solve. So that's all I've got. I've probably talked longer than you care to, care to hear me, but feel free, any questions you've got.
Thank you, Mr. Darwin. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Will you be managing this property and will you develop?
So the, the plan right now is we're, we'll develop the property, and we'll, we'll look for partners who are specialized in student housing. You know, we want this to be a first-class student housing project for Stevensville, but our intention is to, is to stay in as a partner in the, in the project. Yes, sir.
Did you look at building many homes on the property rather than apartments? Do you build single-family homes also, and did you look at that option?
Yeah, we didn't look at that option for this project. We felt this, the need here is student housing, and that's what we'd, we'd like to accomplish by building this project. You know, I, I talked to Steve a little bit, just trying to get an idea. It, you know, and I didn't mention this in regards to housing in, in Stevensville, but most of the housing being built here is being built for students. You know, it's build-to-rent, as, as they say. And that can work, but that's not the best use of large tracts of land, right? That housing should be built for, for residents of Stevensville. And a project like this is a, is a way to get, you know, the number of beds that Tarleton desperately needs while reserving more opportunities for development elsewhere in the city.
As student housing, will it be strictly for students or just tailored for?
No, strictly for students, yeah. That's why the purpose-built student housing part's important. And, and the parking requirement, that comes into effect when you are renting by the bed for student housing, right? If we were under, we came in here at R3 without it being purpose-built student housing rental, rent by the bed, then our parking requirements, and Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, are two parking spots per unit. So theoretically, you could have a three-bed unit with two, you know. And I think that's some of the things that have been, that happened on some previous projects. So our intention, we want to be very clear that this is purpose-built for student housing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Darwin.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. So what we're going to do now is I'm going to open a public hearing. Now, in a public hearing, you're given three minutes to speak. If there is, I, I know that there may be like a specific neighborhood group here. If you would like to designate one person to speak on your behalf and list all of your concerns, then that one person can have ten minutes to speak. That's up to y'all if you want to take advantage of that. We do have, as I, as Steve mentioned, a dozen letters and of opposition. We have all read those thoroughly. So if you have sent a letter in opposition, you don't need to also come up and restate everything that was in that letter. We've, we've already got that. So we've got just a big group here tonight. I'm very, very proud and thankful of you guys for coming out and, you know, showing your, your interest in wanting to fight for what you believe in. That is fantastic, and we want to hear you. So we're glad that you're here. That said, three minutes per person will be here a long time if everybody wants to speak. So what I'm going to do is, y'all have filled out some speaker registration forms. I'm going to start down the list and asking individuals, you'll, we'll put a timer up for three minutes. You'll have three minutes to, you'll state your name, you'll state your address, and you'll state what your concerns are. Okay? All right. So that said, and if you have filled out one of these forms and you've changed your mind, and I call your name, simply say, no, it's, it's been covered. Because what, what generally you're going to hear is that, you know, the, the same subjects come up quite a bit. So we can see that y'all are very passionate. We see you here. We understand that you, the bulk of you are, are here, I think, in opposition, but we'll, we'll find out when we, when we open the public hearing. Looks like I got another stack. All right. So I am now going to up, open the public hearing. If there is anybody who wishes to speak in opposition of this rezone or in favor of this rezone, now will be the time to do so. So we are going to start with Mr. Scott Randolph. If you could come up to the podium, state your name and address, and three minutes is on the clock.
Hi, my name's Scott Randolph. I live at fifteen-oh-six Whitefield Street. Wish I wasn't the first one to go, but. A little bit about me and my family. Eighteen-year Stevensville resident, moved from Stevensville, I mean, moved from Fort Worth to here. My wife is a Tarleton grad. Been a business owner here for twelve years. We have two little boys. We live on Whitefield Street. We moved to that area specifically. We love being in town. We love being around things. But we like to move out to be a little bit further away from just, you know, everyone knows hustle and bustle of the middle of the town. As a whole, I support Tarleton growth. I'm all for it. I'm proud to be here where Tarleton is. I'm a proponent of, you know, Stevensville growth. It only benefits my business, so I'm, I'm all for everything. What I'm not for is, I don't know if you'd call this growth. It's just, I don't know, hopefully, an ill-thought-out plan. My main, my main concerns, of course, I think with everyone's, is the amount of traffic to and from on Cedar Street. Also, don't love that there's a pool pretty much from my, from my front door that I can see. That's going to be rowdy. I mean, I was twenty years old once. I don't understand how twenty-year-olds can be so loud, but they can. Like, I get it. I mean, my boys ride their bikes. They're six and three. They, they literally live on their bikes. They're up and down a neighborhood. A lot of families are in a neighborhood. It's kind of transitioning from an older neighborhood to a younger neighborhood. Had a lot of new people moving in, renovating homes. A lot of people have, you know, made that their family home. And it's not just, I think a lot of people are focusing on in front of Cedar Street. I'm talking about the whole, you know, I don't know how many homes, seventy-five homes or so on Lockwood K, K Block, our little dead-end street, Whitefield. There's a lot of families out there that really don't want to be next to two-thousand students. Nothing against students. I was one at some point. I mean, the facts that, that we're kind of faced with, two-thousand people, crime's going to go up. It's just, it's just what happens. Car's going to get broken into. It happens. I mean, those things unfortunately will happen with anything this size. It just is, it is. Our property values will most likely decline, which I'd be okay with not paying some taxes. But at the same time, if I want to get out of that neighborhood and sell, I'd really like for my property not to, you know, go down. Traffic will be absolutely insane, of course. I don't think Harbin's going to get done. If that is a guarantee, that'd be a little different, but it seems to be pretty up in the air. I mean, really, without just going on a long list, I mean, I, I don't see the benefit for this right here. This could go in so many different places. We were just joking about, it could go right next to Atwoods. We were just joking about, that could go right next to Atwoods. The fact that it's a mile from campus, I don't see these students walking to campus, biking, they're going to get in their cars and drive. It's just, we live in Texas, it's 110 in the summertime. So to want to put this this close to campus, I understand it, it's just, I mean, the reality of it is, they're going to park their car, they're going to drive, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have Elizabeth Banks. Please state your name and address.
My name is Elizabeth Banks, I live on Whitefield Street as well, I'm on the corner of Whitefield and Lilian. I'd like to really oppose the building, mainly because of traffic congestion, there's parking and speeding issues, the traffic would just be abysmal up and down Lilian Street. 1,900 students' cars trying to get in and out. If they got Harbin open, that would be okay, but if Cedar's open, they're all going to be coming out that way, there's no way that road's ready for that. It's way too dangerous, there's no sidewalks, there's always families and kids out walking and playing and talking and visiting, and, you know, it's our own neighborhood, that's our home, and we don't want 1,900 people driving through it. It's just not okay. And I'm worried about a lot of the natural resources, because there's a creek bed that runs down through there, and a lot of that drains downstream to fill up the creeks and the cattle, cattle tanks and all that. I'm worried about that being flooded out, getting poisoned, you know, things like that, that's another concern downstream from there to me, because I have friends that live down there, that, you know, that worries me. In the Stevensville 2050 Comprehensive Plan that y'all have developed, looks like they had a lot of people working on that, so that was nice, it has a couple of statements in there, like, under the land use, it says in the number three, they want to maintain the edge between rural and urban and prevent sprawling developments that do not contribute to the character of Stevensville. And then in the number five, it says they want to relieve pressure in neighborhoods by adding multipurpose student-built housing close to campus. I don't know what close to campus could be, unless they bind levels of more houses through there. Then under housing in that 2050 plan, the number three states that they want to prioritize the character of existing neighborhoods. That's not going to prioritize our existing neighborhood by having all that in there. And it also states that, number four, that they want to increase the student housing opportunities adjacent to the campus and not a mile away. Those are just some of my concerns, and I'm sure, as everybody else has talked about, the other concerns as well, but there's too many to go through in three minutes. So I thank y'all for listening.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thanks. Next, we have Penny Hampton.
I'll try not to repeat some of the things everybody else has said, but I come to you speaking as a graduate.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry, Penny Hampton.
For the recording, thank you.
1411 Harper's Mill Road, it's adjacent to this area, but my family lives in the Lockwood subdivision. So I come to you as a proud graduate of Stevensville and Tarleton, and I have always fought for and encouraged the growth of both of those entities. But I'm here today to talk to you in opposition of the proposed rezoning in this area. Lots of people are talking about the Cedar Street road access, not really focusing on the Lilian Atwood Road that you come, have to come into. Even if the Harbin development happens, students aren't going to go further away. They're not, it's not realistic to think they'll drive further to get to where they're going to park, they're going to use that access. And if you've ever, if you haven't driven down the road, I encourage you to. It's a very small road, it's not even, there's not striped, there's, it's hard to get two cars down the road, much less having this many. There are two bus stops for school on that road, all of the students that live in that area frequently on the street. My concerns come down to safety. There's lots of other concerns, but safety. There's a blind corner where it accesses off Lilian onto Cedar, you can't have two cars on that road at a time. If you do, it's difficult to see during the day, much less at different points of the night. So when you think about children in the community, you think about people walking, you think about the excessive amount, that road is a rural area, you're talking about putting a small town in the middle of a rural area through, adjacent to a residential community. I want Tarleton to grow, I want Stevensville to grow, but putting this in this area doesn't necessarily, you talked a lot about, if you put homes in that area, it would be different, it would be more homes, more people sleeping in that area, but there'd be different intent. If you have families in the area as opposed to students, let's be honest, students aren't going to always, I, of course, made the right decisions as a student, but not all, right, Mom? But not all students are going to do that. So they're going to make the easy access, they're going to go faster through a community where there's children, there's signs up there that says, you know, be careful, children at play. If, I encourage you to drive on the road. If you haven't, then you'll see why there's so many people here who are passionate about not changing, forcing an issue into an area that is not, does not have the infrastructure, does not have the access, and you can't expand the road because you have families on each side. So the possibility to expand that single road that's not even striped, granted, very small road, is not even a possibility. And the parking, monitoring the parking, that's been an issue that other complexes that have been developed in the city have had to face. Any overflow parking, where would they park on that road that has single usage? There would be no access to parks, where are they going to park, on the streets in the subdivision? Then that is not, there's going to have visitors. There's not just going to be residents that are in this area, so where are they going to park?
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Next up, we have Deice Howell.
It never gets pronounced.
Tell me how it's.
It's Dorice.
Oh, Dorice, I saw a V.
That's okay.
Dorice, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Dorice Howell, Kenneth is my husband, Kenneth Howell, and we live at 1610 West Cedar Street. We also own property at 1560 Cedar Street, 1411 Kalock, and 1360 Kalock. We've been lifetime residents of Stevensville in Eret County, and we are here totally opposed to this project. We completely understand, we bought that property 30-years ago to have our forever home there. We knew that there was a possibility that this area was going to be developed, Kenneth has leased that place to run cows on it, we've utilized this piece of land, but this particular project, let me rephrase that, rezoning this piece of property to R3 would be detrimental to this area, we believe. We've always known it's going to be sold, we don't have to be threatened that it's going to be sold, we know it is, but if this particular project goes, doesn't go through in the contract with the snakes, something happens, and this project, this piece of land gets rezoned, they can come in there and put multifamily, multifamily units in there, once it's been rezoned. The variances that have already been approved go with the property, they don't go with the project. So part of this has already been affected, and there's nothing that any of us would be able to do to stop that if y'all changed the zoning. So we appreciate you listening to our concerns and not doing that. There are multiple reasons for this not going through, the traffic, I'm not going to harp on that, we all know it's a disaster, we don't want to go there. This road floods every year, multiple times a year. It floods down at the low-water crossing, which the city has added some tin horns, we don't know, we hadn't had rain in two years, but we don't know what that's going to do. But that water runs off of the Walmart area, down into a lake, down to Nathan Collier's property, which is a tank, down behind our property, over towards Alexander Road, and towards Heritage Hills. So it has a large effect of residential areas. And it happens, you know, there's another section right where the proposed interest is to this piece of property, that floods also when it rains, or water runs over this road, and all that's out there right now is grass, mesquite trees, and cows. When you put rooftops and concrete out there, that water's got to go somewhere. I know there's going to have to be a drainage study, we're aware of that, but the water still has to go somewhere, and it's got to be directed somewhere. It already is a problem as it stands. The traffic, I've discussed that. All of us here that have this age kids, our grandkids, are well-aware of the possibility of what's fixing to happen here. Kenneth built Oak Tree Apartments 40-years ago, and for two-years after that, he managed it. So we are unfortunately very familiar with what is going to happen with students of this magnitude, and it's not, it's not going to be fit for a residential area. All the other large student housing locations that we have in Stevensville are not adjacent to residential homes. They are around commercial properties or not around residential homes. We are, we are strong supporters of Stevensville, and we want Tarleton to grow, and we need, we know that that needs to happen, and I just want to say that we appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Next up, we have Carolyn Hampton.
I'm Carolyn Hampton, 1410 Kalock, where I've lived for over 50-years, lived in Stevensville for over 65, and have enjoyed seeing the growth in Tarleton, a graduate of Tarleton as well as Stevensville. And I have a lot of pride about our community and the way it's grown and the things, I know that you all dedicate a lot of time and consideration, and a lot of the concerns that I've had have already been said, so I'm not going to go over those. The traffic and the concern for our kiddos, the safety at those two buses, when they let those kids off, I've watched them year after year, a lot of kids get off to go to those, whatever, I haven't counted the number of houses, but they stop twice and let those kids off. And it's already a concern with the traffic. And I know, and I've seen the flooded roads over the years that I've lived there, but I won't go into all that, but my concern primarily is the safety for our children that are walking in that neighborhood, that get off of that school bus, and some of us old folks walk it too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Eric Cagle.
Hello, I'm Eric Cagle, I live at 626 Private Road 1424, that's directly off Cedar Street across, adjacent to this proposed property plan. I stand before you today as a concerned resident of Stevensville and also a Tarleton alumni. I have lived in Stevensville for over 25-years, 12 of those being on Kalock Street, and the most recent 12 right there off Cedar Street. The property we have there is literally my home. The proposed development, if approved, would significantly compromise the integrity of safety and the prosperity of our neighborhood. I urge you to carefully consider following, the following reasons for opposing this project before making any decisions. Our single-family residential neighborhood is characterized by its peaceful streets, well-kept homes, tight-knit community. Introducing a large-scale college-student living complex into this environment would disrupt the delicate balance we have worked hard to maintain. The influx of transient students with their erratic schedules and potentially disruptive behavior would threaten to disturb the peace and the harmony that has defined our neighborhood for years. Moreover, the safety of our residents is paramount, and the construction of a college-student living complex raises legitimate concerns in regard. College campuses are often associated with partying, excessive noise, and other behaviors that can spill over into the surrounding areas. Introducing hundreds of college students into our neighborhood would inevitably lead to an increase in noise complaints, littering, and potential conflicts with the residents. Our neighborhood infrastructure is already strained by needs of its current residents, as heard about the flooding, including families, professionals, and retirees that live there. Introducing a large student population into the mix would only intensify these challenges. The transient nature of the student population will surely and significantly increase the vehicular traffic and an already small and hazardous street. It is common for residents to walk, enjoy outdoors, and visit with neighbors in our streets, not to mention the small children that will be at play around their houses. Our roads, utilities, and public services are not equipped to handle the demands of hundreds of additional residents. If this project were to proceed, it would certainly lead to a diminished quality of life for the residents in this neighborhood. Furthermore, the construction of a college-student living complex would have serious financial implications for homeowners in our neighborhood. Property values are likely to decrease as potential buyers and renters are deterred by the prospect of living in close proximity to a large student population. And also to mention the runoff, I own the property that that runoff runs across, and we constantly have floods, there are times that I cannot leave my house for hours because the bridge on my property is completely underwater. That runoff would affect several houses down my road.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kevin Mick.
I own the house that's, you can see the arena right there, the driveway directly across from their driveway. I'm just going to read really quick, since only a short amount of time. My first reaction was the F-word, but I took a deep breath to think about the situation from everybody's shoes. I'm not a selfish person, and this decision is bigger than just me, and it would not be right for me just to think about myself. So I would like to explain, explain who this affects, starting with the most important people first, and the least important person, myself and the ranch. Firstly, the most important and wonderful people of Stevensville and the city itself, the cowboy capital of the world, which I love dearly. This town holds a special place in my heart. Over the years, I have lived in some of the best-planned-out towns, big and small, and have seen many failures and successes. To create a very well-thought-out, planned city, it starts from making great calculations in the beginning. If we lay it out wrong in the beginning, it's just too late to go back and fix all the mistakes. Later, has it costly to change and recreate existing structures and dynamic. Stevensville has great historical roots and has a great city layout. We all know it's growing, which is great, but we have to get it right when we experience these growth spurts. If we are going to continue to claim that we are the cowboy capital of the world, then I believe we need to keep, keep that exact claim in mind when it comes to important decision-making of this town. Secondly, the most important is the students. Tarleton University plays a big role in this town. I believe the students absolutely need more affordable student housing, but the big question here is, where should that location be? Students are on a budget and should be close by town and even walking distance to get essential goods. Students should be in walking distance of their school, or at least a very short bike ride, as some may not be able to afford a car. I know what it's like to be a college student, I worked two jobs when I was in college to pay for tuition and books. Student housing also needs to be a location where higher noise levels go unnoticed by the surrounding areas. That way, the neighborhoods that surround them can still maintain a normal day-to-day life without partying students. We have all been there at that point of our lives in one way or another. While at the same time, a single-family neighborhood should have their peace with a city buffer zone in between them and the school. Another reason why student housing needs to be closer to the school and town, students should be able to walk to coffee shops, fast-food restaurants at their convenience. Walking distance also puts a stop to a lot of students drinking and driving, because we all know that will happen. I hate to say this, but this land doesn't offer any of those student needs. To get this land, students would have to drive through the neighborhood into the start of the outskirts, where the peaceful ranches start, even the road to get there is not a straight shot, and is built, and is built for this kind of traffic. There's a 9-degree turn at the end of West Cedar Street. If a student blows that turn, or drives like a normal wild college student, there will eventually be a car that goes through that house. I think it's 1490.
You were doing great. That's great house, and they have knocked the real law.
Yeah.
It has got to the house.
Am I out of time?
Yeah, you're out of time.
I got halfway.
Thank you. Well done, well written. Should I butcher her name?
Can I come speak?
Would you, would he prefer that, is that?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Okay.
I have a, I'm down there too.
All right, come on up.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah.
Hello, I'm Sadie Mays, and we live on 1440 West Melissa. My daughter also lives on 1485 Kalock Street. My daughter also lives on 1485 Kalock Street. We've lived here for almost 20 years and we're, well, my daughter, my husband and I are all graduates of Tarleton. We love Tarleton, we love the students there, we have a ministry at our church for college kids, we're all about them. However, I'm not sure that that's the best place for a, a multi-student complex because my daughter lives on that blind curve that they're going to be flying around. She has two young boys. One is seven and the other one is six. The six-year-old is blind, cannot see at all. And it's already, there's some college kids that live down the road from her and it's already been a problem with them coming around that curve too fast. She's had to call, actually call the police on them and they even asked her one time, "Hey, did you call the police on us?" And she said, "Yes, I did. As long as y'all slow down, you won't have a problem with me. If you speed around that curve, I'm going to call them every time." And Lillian, as they were saying, is not set up for the traffic and there's no way to expand it for the traffic. Around that blind curve is crazy. The school bus stops right there on the edge of that blind curb. My daughter's babysitter saw almost a head-on wreck between a car and the school bus, right there. My grandson was on the school bus. My other grandson, that's blind, rides a special-needs school bus. There have been several times when my daughter has seen people not stop, go around it when it stopped with the stop, stop signs out. He's blind. You know, somebody's there to get him off the bus, but he's still blind. And there's a lot of kids that live up and down that neighborhood. There's a lot of elderly people that walk on that neighborhood. We know our neighbors, there's a guy next to us in a wheelchair. I have MS, which, you know, is not anything like being blind or anything, but it's a problem sometimes. I, I don't cross the street quickly. You know, another problem that I've seen is school. All the schools in Stevieville start between 7:45 and 8 o'clock, okay? Tarleton also begins its classes at 8 o'clock. So how, how are we going to get all the kids and the college kids down those streets at 8? Parents have to get their kids to school and then get to work. How is that going to happen? You know?
Thank you, Mrs. Mays.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.[779.12][779.12](APPLAUSE). Next, we have Jill McGangus.
Hello, I'm Jill McGangus. I live at 891 Private Road 1424. So our private road is right across from this addition. All of these people have really valid concerns. I think to summarize, what, what I'm really concerned about is I have yet to hear a definitive answer on if Harbin's going to be extended to this. So we say it a lot, I've, I've heard a lot of maybes or a lot of that's our plan, but it's, it's my understanding that the property that would need to be purchased is from another property owner to extend Harbin. So my question is, has that been purchased? What is the city's plan for that? The Allens own it. What is the city's plan for that? Is it to purchase it? Where is the budget for that coming from? Is it the developers? If it is the developers, I'd love to know. I just want answers because I think we're all concerned about Cedar, okay? I'm a property owner, I'm also a business owner, I'm also a surgeon, and I would tell you that in my mind, I would never sign someone up for a surgery if I didn't know that I had instruments there or my implants weren't going to be there. So I cannot understand going through a rezoning when we do not know the answers to our questions and our concerns, which is, what is the access? So I understand that we all want a traffic study done, but I feel like the traffic study should probably be done before we rezone something to an R3 from an R1 because that is our biggest concern. And I think if you can answer those questions for us, then you wouldn't have this many people in a room that are talking to you about, hey, we're really concerned. So we just want some transparency and, you know, letting us know this is going to be done. Because I've heard the Harbin thing asked multiple times, but I have yet to hear an answer. So I think that that's my biggest concern. Again, Cedar, if you, if you drive that road, it's not just Cedar, it's not just Lillian. What's going to happen is that light's going to get backed up. At the light, those kids are going to go across at Kalock, they're going to go across at Melissa, they're going to go across at Lockwood, they're going to be speeding to get to school. I'm telling you that those kids, there's kids that play in the streets, there's elderly people there. I've seen firsthand in an emergency room, a kid hit by a car and you're taking them to the operating room. And it is not the funnest thing in the world and it is not something that I want for our community. So I am a Tarleton State alumni, I'm proud to be an alumni, my husband is an alumni, but we are also Stevieville residents and we're also property owners. And I think both of those are important entities and we don't need to cater to one with doing a disservice to the other. And that is our biggest concern. Yes, there is a housing issue here in Stevieville and we're talking about single-family homes, but I'm telling you, when I was in college, I wasn't going to turn down a single-family home for rent in town where I had a yard and I had privacy for something where I had 1,900 people living with me. So I don't think that this is going to get kids out of your single-family homes.
Thank you ma'am. Ross McGangus?
I'll be brief. We, we have similar thoughts and opinions on this. Ross McGangus, 891 PR 1424. Really, the, the overall issue is where I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse on this, as, as has been stated over and over, the traffic is the issue, but what, what sort of guarantees do we have for Harbin to be extended, for this traffic study to flow properly? We, we know there's going to be danger to, to the population if it is, if it goes as is. And if you take a look at the, the design currently, the parking spots are located by Cedar. If I, if I'm driving, I'm going to get on Cedar pretty quickly and that's our main concern as, as parents, as, as we have young children. The, the other thing that really has been brought up is we, say we do, say this does get rezoned, we have 2,000 more students, availability for 2,000 more students, what limits Tarleton to just accepting 2,000 more students and putting Steve on the same situation? We don't have, or most people in this room don't have a say on that. This is the room that we have a say on. That's why you have the population showing up for this. This is where we're represented. Please listen, I do not approve of this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you sir. George Mora?
Hello, people of Stevieville. My name is George Mora. I live on the corner of Cedar Street, 1501 West Cedar Street. I oppose this rezoning. I agree with the project. I agree with the, the need that Tarleton has. I agree with Harbin, even without this project, needs to go through. Like I said, I live directly on that corner. I can't even mow my lawn without even looking for traffic both ways. There's, the road is just horrendous. I have two boys, nine and 11, ages nine and 11. We also work at Foster's Children's Home. For normacy, we like to get off campus and we like to bring those children to the house to play outside. Come inside, play, have a, a sense of normacy to get away from campus. Their ages are six to 11 and we have six kids in care. Again, it's, the traffic is already horrendous. To add something of this magnitude is going to take it way out of hand, alive will be lost, I feel. I am from Tempe, Arizona, so Arizona State University. I have seen many accidents on corner houses where kids just fall asleep, drunk, whatever. My son is on that corner room. He sleeps right there. And also, there is on Lillian, a liquor store right there. That is easy access for these kids to continue to use Cedar. As a college student, you plug in something to your GPS, it's going to take you to the shortest destination. So whether this is available or that's available there, going through that neighborhood, and we will potentially be the ones to take the consequence. And then as far as the, just find another location. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Those are all the sheets I have. Is there anybody out there who wishes to speak? Yes ma'am. Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Carolyn Peake. I live in 1691 West Cedar. See on that map up there, that little corner down there, that's my house. I'm concerned about what they're going to do with Creek and how they're going to address it. I hope they don't make it as wide as on that picture. That creek is dry except when it rains. And then it's twice the size of this, I have seen it twice the size of this room over Cedar Street. So that is a real problem. I don't know if they realize how large a problem that is. The other reason I wanted to come up here and talk is something we haven't mentioned. We're all concerned about the elderly, the children. I'm kind of concerned about the wildlife. From my backyard, I see deer all the time. There's a little meadow out there. I see fawns and, and their mothers out there playing all the time. There's also a bobcat that lives out there that I have seen. There's a lot of rabbits, possums, raccoons. Where are they going to go? I mean, that's been their home forever. That's not a decision that, or a, a reason to make a decision, but it is a reason. Thank you.
Sir?
My name's Wayne Hancock. I'm the minister at the Cross Timbers Church of Christ, right there next to Development. I'll just say, our concern as the church is, personally, I'm doubtful that a, access to Cedar wouldn't be required. And our concern is that our, our facility right there with the parking spot becomes the overflow parking for the development, which is not our responsibility to bear. We want to welcome college students, but that puts us in an awkward position when it comes to having parking for our members. Also say, I serve as a member of the local homeless coalition and I'm not here to speak in an official capacity on their behalf, but as the developer mentioned, most of the developments going on in Stevieville right now are this type of student housing development. And we receive increasingly more calls about, even from Tarleton itself, asking us to help house their students. These type of developments are not solving the housing crisis, is in fact creating a desperate homeless situation in Stevieville. We need single-family housing and the city needs to send a clear message to Tarleton that they are responsible for housing their students, not the city of Stevieville. So I appeal to you as the zoning commission, you are the last line of defense for these people and their homes. Please make that defense.
Thank you sir.
My name's Kenneth Howell and I just wanted to reiterate about...
Could you state your address please?
Pardon me?
Address?
1610 West Cedar Street. We also own 1560 West Cedar Street. I just, if this project were to fail and this gets rezoned R3, what could go in there then? You know, it's not a pretty picture. So, you know, there's nothing that ties this to the property. So if, if this gets changed, it's, that's the way it is. And that's, there's a whole lot more housing could go in there under an R3 zoning if they did that.
Thank you sir. Anybody else wish to speak?
I just forgot to mention one thing.
Hop on up. Mr. Mora?
Forgot to mention one thing and Wayne can attest to this. Cross Timbers Church of Christ, their parking lot is used for doughnuts already. You can go look at the skid marks.
Okay.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes sir. Please state your name and address.
I live at 16, no, 1450 Melissa Drive. My name is Steve Keck. One of the concerns I have, of course, is the traffic and everything, but considering the road structure in, on Cedar Street, that's not, if, if we make that an emergency exit like they're talking about, that road is not supportive structure-wise of heavy firefighting equipment or emergency. And two, Harbin Drive, have any of you tried to ride a bicycle on Harbin Drive or any street in Stevieville? It's, it's just not safe. So if this does pass, I would like for the city to consider making bike paths as we rebuild the streets, make it safe for the college students. Because like this man said, not everybody can afford vehicles and that sort of thing.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes sir.
Eric Cagle, 14, I mean, 626 Private Road 1424. Just thinking about if this project is rezoned and the project does move forward, I know that we're still in limbo about what's going to happen at the extension of Harbin and Copper, or the other street. Caporale, thank you. If that is delayed in any way, then we're assuming that Cedar Street will be the construction entrance to build all this. That will be, all of these, all of these complaints will be there again. Even if that is an emergency exit someday, that will be the construction entrance. So...
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
If that is true, if it's a construction area and you have, and it's blocked off and you have to go around, it's about a 12-minute drive to go around. Because when the water's over the road, and I've had to do that, you wind through everywhere before you can get to a main road.
Thank you. Yes ma'am. Please state your name and address.
My name is Sarah Doloff. I'm at 1490 Melissa Drive. My driveway comes directly onto Lillian. My son runs down Lillian and down Cedar Street to train. He's a boxer that represents Stevieville Boxing Club and a champion, and I don't want his success to be at the expense of Tarleton students. I'm a Tarleton graduate. I moved here in 2002 to go to school at Tarleton and proud to be, but I'm not in favor of this. Neither is my husband, who is a lifetime resident of Stevieville and both of his parents are Tarleton graduates. This is not okay for our community.
Thank you ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you all for, for exercising your right to speak. We appreciate it, we hear it. So we thank you for coming out tonight. Commissioners, we need a motion so that we can discuss.
I recommend the council denial of RZ 2024-004.
Second.
So we've got, Brian, I think Justin got to you on that second first. Commissioners, do we need to discuss?
Lot of good points brought up today.
Lot of good points. Yeah, I think, I, for me, the most... Yeah, I think, for me, the most compelling point for me is that I think Tarleton students need to be next to Tarleton.
Yep. Even in the comprehensive plan that we're going to review later, that we've spent a lot of time, money, and energy, it calls for Town Center not in this area. This is community core, which does not call for student housing.
And this is also part of the comprehensive plan that we're going to look at next, is the prioritizing existing neighborhoods. This does not prioritize that neighborhood.
All right, so... The motion stands that we recommend to council denying this rezon request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so ladies and gentlemen, what this means is that this now goes to City Council. So we only recommend to council. Council makes the final decision. So what y'all want to do is show up to the next City Council meeting, which is the first Tuesday... June fourth, I believe? Yeah, first Tuesday of the month. Same thing, don't come at four. It's at five-thirty. Okay, so that's your next stop. They are the people who make the final decision on this. We only recommend. Okay? Now, we're going to go ahead and continue with our agenda, but if y'all want to go out and have your dinner, you are welcome to leave. You don't need to stick around unless you're super interested in the process, then you're welcome to stay. Thank you. All right, I want to thank the remaining people who have stuck it out. That was a long one. You got a nice education in the civic process today. Thank you. Yep. We're going to go slow. All right. Next up, we have, so we're beginning, returning to the normal order of our agenda, so the second item on our agenda is case number R zero, RZ two zero two four dash zero zero five. Advocate Brett Florrie, representing Caliber Collision and NPH Ventures LLC, is requesting a rezon of property located at nine zero two Wolf Nursery Road, being parcel R seven two nine nine four, block one, lot three, in the Phase Three DOS Edition of the City of Stevensville, Eryth County, Texas, from B two Retail and Commercial District to Industrial District. Steve, you still there somewhere? There you are. You're on mute.
My apologies. This is for Caliber Collision, and yes, ma'am, I was still awake. This is Caliber Collision. They are looking at putting a body shop here. B two zoning allows for auto repair and auto use, auto shops throughout the city. However, only the industrial zone allows for full-blown paint and body shop, and so that's the premise behind the rezon request. If we look across the city, we have multiple body shops in B two zoned properties. They are working as legal non-conforming uses. And in some parts of the city, we have industrial zoning adjacent to commercial. So this is, although the area is not zoned for industrial, we believe that the uses would be compatible for adjacent businesses. This is directly across from the stadium, but the business use and their business model, they've provided some renderings. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Caliber Collisions. A lot of their places, businesses are located in the metroplex area, so I've seen a lot of them. And they run a very nice shop, and I don't really think it's going to offer any significant concern in regards to aesthetics or anything of that nature for this particular business in consideration of the proximity to the stadium. So with that, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Steve? All right, is the applicant here with us tonight, Mr. Florrie? Give anything you'd love to add?
I think he did a good presentation. I do this for Caliber all over the country, and so it's, they're a good neighbor. The CFO's actually daughter goes to Tarleton, so we're putting Tarleton colors on the building. They're the world's largest collision repair company. They have over twenty-five thousand employees. They own all their own shops, so they have, you know, strict control over the operations, and they work with all the major insurance companies, so they got to keep a first-class operation clean and meet all the local, state, and federal codes, so.
All right, thank you, sir.
There's a rendering, but we're going to totally redo the building to make it look as new as we possibly can. All the work done inside the building, the shop will be air-conditioned. All the repair damaged vehicles will be parked behind the fence, so you won't see those. But they're looking forward to be in here, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Florrie? All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing now. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this rezon? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I move that we recommend to council approval of RZ twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five.
Second.
All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezon request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so Mr. Florrie, you heard the drill. Your next stop is City Council. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and hanging around. Appreciate it. Next up, we have case number RZ two zero two four dash zero zero six. Advocate Travis Trust is requesting a rezon of property located at three zero eight four West Washington, being parcel R two three eight four seven, acres one point four seven zero A zero six one three, Pearson Henry House and Commercial Build of the City of Stevensville, Eryth County, Texas, from B two Retail and Commercial to Industrial. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This property owner is one of those that I've mentioned previously that has a paint and body shop in an area zoned as B two. He's requesting a rezon to industrial, so his business will align with the correct zoning, and I believe he does have future plans to expand his business, and that may include a towing component that would be for consent toads related to his business. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Steve?
Is that where Hunter's body was?
Yes. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Steve. Is Mr. Trust with us tonight?
I am.
Sir, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, there's not going to be building above the old thing that would change, it would be an impound lot.
Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this rezon request? I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I recommend to council approval of RZ twenty twenty-four dash zero zero six.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of recommending council approval of this rezon request, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? All right, moving on. Case number RZ two zero two four dash zero zero seven. Advocate Paxton Woolley, representing JPW Consulting Company and Triple W Remodeling LLC, is requesting a rezon of property located at one zero two zero Paddock, being parcel R two eight seven seven zero S two three zero zero Butler Edition, block two, lot twelve of the City of Stevensville, Eryth County, Texas, from R one Single Family Residential to R two one and two family district. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This property has the dimensions of roughly ninety feet by, I believe, two hundred and thirty foot in depth. Mr. Paxton is looking to have this property rezoned. If it is rezoned, I understand a replat will occur in the future. He is asking to build, he's asking for the R two designation, which allows single-family and one- and two-family as permitted uses with his site plan that he's included in the packet. You will see that the, I believe, the front lot will be the single-family lot. The dimensions for a single-family lot in this zoning will allow for a fifty-foot frontage. The duplex lot will have forty-foot frontage on the street, which is required by ordinance, a forty-foot access to the street. And then at the depth of the lot, it will have the full ninety-foot width for the lot dimension as the front dimension of the lot. So again, he's asking for this for the purpose of building single-family and duplex-style homes with a replat occurring in the future. Any questions, we'd be glad to answer. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Steve?
On the picture that's up right now, the dotted line would be roughly an idea of the replat, showing the two different properties with anisement to the driveway.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Steve. Is Mr. Woolley here tonight?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Would you like to come up to the podium?
Sure, sure.
Requesting a rezon to meet the flag lot requirements. We've met the city ordinances and the requirements to have the single-family structure and the multi-family structure on that, and we've also provided adequate parking to relieve the street, off of the street parking.
Any questions for Mr. Woolley?
The water and sewage, would it be running through the driveway area?
So the flag lot requirements require that there be a fifty-foot road frontage for the single-family, and then it requires a forty-foot variance for the shared driveway. So that's where the utilities would run through, is on that flag lot running along the side of the driveway portion.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this rezon request? Yes, sir.
Carl Holland, I live ten twenty-five North Paddock. I just want a clarification about how many units there's going to be.
Mr. Woolley's...
The front house will be a single-family unit, and the back property will be a duplex.
So just four units, basically.
Thank you, sir. Did we, is Mr. Winfrey here?
Yes.
Did you, was this...
For the next one.
For the next one?
Yes.
Thank you, and, okay. All right. Anybody else wish to speak in favor or against? All right, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Commissioners?
I recommend to council approval of RZ twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven.
A second. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezon request, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here tonight. Next up, we have case number PD two zero two four dash zero zero one. Applicant Southwestern Pigeon Road LLC is requesting a rezon of property located at three one five FM two three zero three, parcel R six five zero nine zero, being acres three point zero two zero A zero five two zero Menifee Jarrett, and parcel R two two five eight seven, being ninety-one point eight three zero acres of the A zero five two zero of Menifee Jarrett. House and barn to the City of Stevensville, Eryth County, Texas, from R one Single Family Residential and to be determined to planned development. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another developer that we've been working with for several months. City Council annexed this property into the city at the last council meeting. If you look at the map, you'll see that there is a very small portion, about two acres, of this property that is already within the city limits, and then the larger portion of that, highlighted in yellow, was annexed into the city. There was a municipal services agreement drafted and approved with the annexation. The zoning will be assigned as we move forward through the process. Again, they're here to not just talk about a conceptual plan, and then if the plan development is actually approved and recommended, I'm sorry, recommended for approval to the City Council, then the zoning would be assigned once the development's approved. They're looking at five units per acre, according to their submittal. They have some buildings that they will be asking for a forty-eight-foot height, and again, they'll be asking for a planned development on this. They do have reference to a sixty-foot height for semi-public buildings. That is, semi-public buildings are things such as churches and schools, and so I think that would actually be a thirty-foot height limitation, thirty-five-foot height, and so they would have to ask for a concession to thirty-five foot and not sixty-foot. They're asking for a fifty percent reduction on parking. It is important to note that this is going to be a gated community, so it will be private streets. The streets will not be dedicated to the city. These units will have their own parking spaces, but they are asking for a fifty percent reduction in their parking. This community will have a public, or I'm sorry, a, an entertainment venue for the residents. I believe they are going to have walking trails and other amenities that will be for their residents, and some consideration being given to include the community as a whole in some of their special events that they intend to have. They do have renderings submitted in the packet. These are cottage-style rental housing units, certainly unique to our city, and a good concept for the circumstances we have. The cost of the extension of water and sewer will be incurred by the developer, and with that, Madam Chair, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioners?
Well, there'd need to be a lift station on this.
I believe there will be. We do have to cross the river. However, they are looking at trying to do that not along Graham Street, but in the southwestern portion of the property, which would actually cross the river and connect to that green line that you see in the map on the first page of the staff report.
Okay.
Depends on, you know, the elevation of that line coming across the river.
Other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the developer here tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, my name is John Allender. I'm a principal with Architectses, we're the architects, on the project here, representing Pigeon Road, Southwest Pigeon Road Development. We've been working with the developer on this project for over a year. We were approached last, a year ago, February, when our client was looking at options on this property and came to us to look at a feasibility study on what could be possible here. And I was candid with him in that I'm not a multi-family development architect. My firm, I've been practicing architecture for over twenty-five years. My firm mostly is known for historic preservation and adaptive use. We've been fortunate to work in communities across the state, and we also specialize in urban planning within primarily historic communities. We built a relationship with this developer because of a project that we did together in Amarillo, converting a downtown high-rise, nineteen-ten high-rise building into a Marriott Autograph Hotel. And so when we started talking about the concepts for what this development could be, it was important to both of us, luckily, that what we really were talking about was creating a community. And this was not an exercise in maxing out the proper... And this was not an exercise in maxing out the property. It was developing a quality neighborhood that really is a premium product. And recognizing the need, yes, there is a need for student housing, obviously, from the cases this evening. But there's also a, a great need for professional, for housing for young professionals, and for administrative professionals and professors at Charleston State. So, the demographic that we've been looking at and the market studies that we've been focusing on is looking at young professionals, the academics, the professors at Charleston State, as well as administrative staff, and empty nesters within the community. So, we're not prohibiting students from living here, but we're not marketing towards student housing. As Mr. Killen said, this will be a gated, private community with access off of Pigeon Road. And tonight, really, is, we wanted to show some of the concepts. We will be following up with the plan development submission with the specifics, but we can speak to some of the concessions that we're, we're asking, we will be asking for, if you'd like. Maybe we can go to the next slide, and we can come back to these if we want. See, within that, I'm not sure, if that preservation stack. So, the, when we started looking at the site plan, it's 92, 92 acres of what is currently horse pasture, undeveloped land. And approximately 60 acres are developable, 30 acres within a floodplain. So, really, the, the organization of the site is focused around the floodplain and how to develop outside of that. And it, with that, it really started to shape the, the property into two zones that is, this, you can go back to that site plan if you could. Yeah, thank you. So, access to the site, to the east, off of Pigeon Road, the, the gated access will be off of Pigeon Road, not Graham. And really, the site is organized, and we're providing, into two kind of zones centered around this central lawn. We'll, we'll show the housing units at the end, but really, what we're providing is primarily a single-family-for-rent product of one, two, and three-bedroom units. There are two groupings of townhome-style units. And there's one grouping of what we're, we're calling the guest houses. Essentially, short-term rental only for the residents to use. If you have a one-bedroom unit and you want your mom, dad, or your guests to come stay, we'll have guest houses for that. The, some of the concessions that Steve was talking about, the height requirements at 48, we are, we are looking at height increase to 48 feet only for the townhome and guesthouse units. The, the single-family units would be single-story. And we are looking at height increase for those townhomes because, as been mentioned earlier tonight, the 35-foot limit for residential really does constrict with modern kind of needs for, for ceiling heights and access, what we can do there. The 60-foot height that we're asking for, for the semi-public or public areas, really is a concession that we're asking at the front entrance of the leasing center for monument sign element, tower kind of signage element. The buildings will not be 60 feet. That, that is not what we're asking for. It's, it's really to allow for some place-making at the, at the front entrance. And the, the parking reduction that Steve mentioned, and we can speak specifically to this, the 50% parking reduction that we're seeking is at the leasing center up front and at the town, what we're calling the town center, the clubhouse in the middle. The reason that we're asking for that parking reduction is because really, one of the hallmarks of this property is the, these alternative mobility options that we're going to be giving the residents. There's an extensive hike and bike trail throughout. We're also going to be having, establishing bus stops for an inter-part, inter-development shuttle. And we're, we're in conversations about also, within the community, private electric scooters for, for the, for the residents to use to get to the clubhouse, to get to the leasing center, so they're not driving their cars everywhere. The, the units themselves, the single-family units themselves, we are providing two spaces per unit, but the plan is a tandem parking configuration, as opposed to the, the current development requires two side-by-side with double access to the, the drive. And what we're proposing is a tandem arrangement for that. We will be, we will, we will be including additional guest parking within the, the unit plans. We're identifying the number of guest parking spaces that'll, you know, be in surplus to those two tandem spaces. So, the, the development really is focused on the idea of community and supporting the young professionals and emerging professionals and, and also the empty nesters. So, there are kind of two key lifestyle amenity areas that we're proposing. The first is at the front of the property, off of Pigeon Road, which effectively is the leasing center. And in today's multi-family development, leasing centers, you really only need a, a small little touchdown area and a place to, you know, to print. Even leases now are digitally signed. There, there's really very little use for that. But you still need a welcome center for guests and, you know, prospective tenants. So, the leasing center is also going to double as a co-working space, which will have private offices for the tenants to use, as well as a conference area and a small coffee shop, so that if there are young, you know, professionals within the community that want to have meetings and don't want to bring people into the site, they'll, will have this amenity at the front for the co-working. The second is what we've called the town center, which is in the center of the site. And effectively, this, this is the clubhouse. It includes a fitness center and a meeting space, the club room, if you will. The vision for that really is, you know, they're talking about a place where family reunions can happen and wedding receptions can happen. It's going to be a premium resort-style amenity space. And the other unique feature within that town center is a bodega-style market, a small grocery that also will have a kitchen that will prepare meals ready to eat, like kind of a grab-and-go market for the, you know, the residents, if they, you know, they want to grab a meal to take home. They'll also be doing a quote-unquote "doordash" style delivery within the community, so residents can order meals and have them delivered. That concession, that, that bodega will also serve as concessions for the pool, the area. And all of that is focused and centered on what's labeled here as the central lawn. Steve did mention, he mentioned it, he called, described it as an, an events venue. This pavilion that we're talking about on the north end of the lawn really is a community pavilion, a park pavilion, if you will, that could have small, little musical events if they wanted to have like an acoustic guitar performer coming in, without having rock concerts and music festivals on the property. It's, it's a, it's a place for the community to use and sometimes to have performances, amenities for the, the residents. And you can see the, it's extensive hike and bike trail that, that surrounds. So, creating community and creating this premium lifestyle within the development was a, you know, major factor. The other that we brought to, to our developer, to our client, which is a primary importance to us, is water quality and the hydrology of this site. We recognize that we're on, within the watershed of the river, adjacent to a floodplain, and would, this is now an undeveloped, you know, parcel of land. And we are increasing the impervial cover to this. So, we really wanted to focus on the water quality that's moving off of the site into the watershed. So, what we're proposing, if, if you could go to the next slide. These are some of the images of the development, inspiration images, if you will. The bottom-left corner is a diagram illustrating what's called a rain garden within the street section. So, all of the interior streets on one side of the road will have a rain garden bioswale, which will take the water runoff from that street section, give it an opportunity to filter and permeate back into before it is moved into the watershed. The, the top image in the center, ignore the, ignore the Austin skyline. But what we're trying to convey there is this, this idea of the central lawn. It's, it's a large, open space, unprogrammed, for the community to use to throw the frisbee, you know, to have a touch football game. And at the bottom-right is a diagram for a secondary, which I think is one of the more exciting features of the site, is this pocket park system that we're weaving through the residential areas. So, it's a secondary trail system. It's a smaller system of parks within each block of the, the residences. And it's also part of the water quality system because it's part of a bioswale that feeds back down into the, into the watershed. Overall, the aesthetic for the development, we really do want to maintain the references to the rural pastoral nature of this. We recognize that we are building residential units here. But if you, when we're talking about fencing, the paving, the street sections, we want to maintain this idea of, of the rural aspect on Pigeon Road. If you could go to the next slide. Yeah. This is a concept plan initially for the leasing and co-working. Again, we really only have two offices for leasing, and the rest of this is available for the community for professional use. The next slide, if you could. And this is starting to show the, the architectural style of this development will be a Spanish Revival, kind of a California Mission style. Pigeon Road, the property's been called La Paloma because of that. And with that, we're developing this architecture of white stucco tile roofs, deep verandas, water features in the public areas as well. And then, these are just reference images within that leasing and co-working for, there will be a coffee shop there, and then the, you know, the, the amenities such as conference areas. And then, the next slide. The, the town center concept plan, as I mentioned, the fitness center, the, the meeting room, kind of this community room with living room areas, you know, on the side for, for some recreation and games, and then the bodega. You'll notice that, yes, we do have a pool. There will be a pool with cabanas, kind of resort-style. But this is not a, this is not a giant pool. It's actually a pretty modest-sized pool for the, the size of community. We want people to enjoy it, but it's not intended to be a raucous, party, you know, Las Vegas-style swimming pool. And then, next. Architectural style for this, again, ignore the mountains, but the, the idea of tile roofs, the, these public areas, the public buildings, we do intend to use stone instead of stucco. And then, these ideas of kind of small, simple resort pools. And then, the next. Interior images showing the, some of the architectural references for the interiors and then the bodega, kind of grab-and-go market. Next. So, the, the dwelling units, the individual, the, the single-family dwelling units, the intent is there's, there's kind of two styles of joining the units together with their parking. So, some of these units will have open carports that basically share up to the quote-unquote "property line", and some of them will have private garages. There's also then this, this option of how the backyard is developed for these. The units with carports will have shared common courtyards in the back with private little patios off of that. And then, the, the garage units will have larger, fenced backyards that share fence lines. Next. These are concept plans for the one-bedroom units. Next. The two- and three-bedroom units. Next. And then, the reference images, again, for that Spanish Revival kind of bungalow. And then, if you could, to the next. Details such as, you know, tile roofs and the, we, we each, the units will have small little courtyards in the front, because we really are, we're actually condensing the street section to, to shorter, smaller front yards, because we really do want to promote people that sense of community out, out into the, the front yard. Next. So, these are renderings of the residential, the interior streets. You can see that the way that the street section is set up, there is a sidewalk and the rain garden on one side of the street, and then our, our street, and then the units to the, to the opposite side. They don't have a sidewalk on that side, the, the way that the, to, to kind of, you know, to compress that, that street section, we're putting sidewalks on one side, married with that, that rain garden. Next. Just one more image of some of the architecture within the, within the building. So, this, that's our concept.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Gorgeous. Commissioners, questions? I've got so many. Why, why do rentals, as opposed to owner having these units be owned? Why, why, why go that conceptually?
That's, you know, that's a question for the developer. They, they wanted, they saw a real market. I mean, this single-family-for-rent market is becoming much more popular, especially as mortgage rates and, you know, cost of money has increased. That there's, there is a demand for rental, single-family rental out there.
So, maintenance on all of this would just be coming out of the rental cost of the?
Yeah, the.
All, all the retail would be run by who?
The developer.
Developer, so the developer is planning to continue the operation?
They're.
So, it's not developing and having someone else come in, it's the developer who's?
No, possibly for the, the restaurant. And, and that probably would be their, what they're talking about right now is hiring somebody within their management group to come in and operate that and not, not outsourcing that to a third party. I guess it's important to note, we're, we're proposing, we're plating this as one lot. This is, this will not be subdivided. So, that, and that was important from the beginning for us to understand and how we're developing this. There is no exit strategy to parcel off and sell off these lots. If they ever wanted to sell, they would be, they would be selling the entire community, but that is not their intent. They, their, their goal is to, to build, to build it and hold it.
Okay.
Do you know about what the average price would be on the rental?
I'm gonna have to defer to our developer, because we're still working through that. We, we do have a market study. It will be above market rate.
I think so, yeah.
Has your developer done anything like this anywhere?
Candidly, no.
Okay.
No. This is, you know, we're, we're really, I mean, this is kind of a, a really unique opportunity for us and for the developer. But, I mean, the, the market study and the pro forma, I mean, everything is just full speed ahead for us.
You mentioned the restaurant. Would the community be able to go to the restaurant? Or, you know, it's a gated community?
It is primarily for the residents. Of course, if guests come in for the residents, and it's, we're, we're, this isn't a, the idea's not a full-service restaurant. It's mostly, the bodega will have prepared meals, you're ready to eat, and then, that same kitchen will support essentially a concession stand for the, the pool area. But there'll be indoor and outdoor seating along with that. So, it'll be counter-service type of a configuration there, not a full-service restaurant. But I, I will say, they, they would love to, if, if you go and you eat a really good burger there and you want it delivered to your house, they, they are considering, you know, expanding their delivery.
Outside the community?
Yeah.
Looking at these, where's parking relative, like, you know, in, in your renderings here?
Just off the screen.
Just, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's like literally beside the building?
They, they are attached.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, if, I don't, if you could go to the previous image, it might, no. We, we intentionally were kind of hiding that. If you go, can you go back to the plan of that? I'm sorry. For there, that, yeah, sorry. So the yellow is the actual dwelling unit and the gray in between would be either a carport or a private garage. And so the tandem parking that we're talking about, so one, one parking spot is in the driveway and then there's a single stall within either a garage or a carport.
Okay, so I see your sidewalk at the top.
Yep.
And the bottom, we've got our parking, okay.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, right, the parallel parking up there?
Right.
Okay.
And we, we are working on a plan where we're actually losing a few units on some of the blocks to do more of a traditional surface style lot for, for guest parking. So they'll, you know, they'll have that option as well.
Okay.
And you're maintaining the streets?
Yes.
So, so the purpose of what we're doing here is just to offer feedback at this point. So do we have any feedback? I, I mean, I think it's, personally, I think it's gorgeous. I love, I love the kind of Mission Spanish Renaissance style, beautiful. I guess I, I would, I don't love the parking. I, I feel like that's a bit of an eyesore in the midst of all this beauty, you know, to have the parking right next to the building. But I, you know, I, I recognize the limitations there.
Well, we, I mean, this really is intended to be as a, as a single family unit, I mean, with a, with a garage, you know, attached garage. Yeah, there, there will be some, in some cases, cars in the drive. And then, yeah, we'll have these nodes of additional parking throughout. But we didn't, a, a lot of the single family products, the single family for rent products that we've studied, you know, their, their model actually is to have a large surface lot and then the residential, the single family residential units where you have to walk from a parking lot to your house. And that's, that's not the model that we wanted to do.
It's tougher groceries.
Yeah, exactly. And weather and, yeah.
Are you planning on using any local contractors or have you got that far?
Not, not to that point yet, but I'm, I'm sure, any opportunity we could, yes.
All right, any, any additional feedback? All right, well, beautiful.
Thank you.
Look forward to, to its next iteration.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right. So we can skip case number, the sixth item, so that, oh, no, there were, there were some people who wish to speak. Yes. Traditionally, for a, a planned development, we don't, we're not required to do a, a, a public hearing, but, but I recognize you're here and you've waited a very long time. So, so please, well, I've got Bob Winfrey and Mike Burns.
Well, and he's speaking on behalf of other people that had to go ahead and?
All right, all right. So let's, let's start with, start with Bob Winfrey.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Please state your, your name, your address.
I'm Bob Winfrey, 615 FM 2303. My wife, Kim, is here with me. So I don't know if we could, so we own the property that this is going to butt up to where, whatever this event center thing is. So three sides of our property line are going to be, you know, will, will be close to this. And so, you know, we bought this place two years ago thinking we were in the country and that we weren't in the city. And, you know, now we're, it's going to have city limits, I guess, backed up to our property line is going to be the city limits. So, but as far as issues go, the, the biggest concern that we have, or one of the biggest concerns, is traffic and getting in and out of there. And if this is, from my understanding, over 350 homes, how many cars is that going to be coming in and out? And if, I don't know if you, you ever drive down Pigeon Road, but Pigeon Road is already busy. And where this entrance is comes out right across from the feed store and goes down to 108, very short distance. And then you have basically a really hard turn to get on 108 or Graham, whatever you want to call it, that you can't see back to the left already. And now we're going to have, what, 500 cars coming out of this one gate? And I've got to get out and, I mean, we, people that live there are going to have to deal with 500 cars coming in, in and out of one gate. And then I don't see how that's really safe. I mean, if, you're going to have, how many people living here and you're going to have one entrance? I mean, I know like at Heritage Hills where we lived at before we bought this property, they had an emergency exit out of the back, you know, that they have an easement that they got out onto like the sewer plant road where it came out. With this, you've got the river, which also presents a concern. I mean, from what I hear, you're going to pump sewage across the river. That's, that to me sounds like it's a little risky, I guess. I mean, we've already had the issues with Bosque River, you know, and Lake Waco, and now we're going to pump sewer across it. So other than that, let's see, I've got a whole list here. So my understanding is it's already been zoned, or it's already been accepted into the city of Stevieville?
It's been annexed.
Okay, so it's been annexed. And so now you're going through the, whatever the development is called.
Plan development.
Plan development, yes. So do, do y'all take into consideration the traffic?
Oh, yes, there'll be a full traffic study.
So that, that's done after it's approved?
Well, what, what, what happens here is we show the initial plan. Then the developer goes, works on it some more, brings it back for approval. The plan development, and then we rezone it to plan development. What the plan development means is that they are locked in to the design elements. They're, they're locked into what they state. So like when we were looking like at that earlier R3 where everyone kept saying, you could do anything in an R3. That's because it, it wasn't a planned development. So in a planned development, once we lock in, this is what it's going to look like, that is what it's going to look like. So you stating your concerns and our importance for the developer to hear so that they can hear, okay, you know, maybe I need to address this concern about traffic on Pigeon Road. So, so that, you know, that they can think about that when they come back, you know, with their actual plan for approval.
So is it up to them to do that? Or is there some kind of guideline set that, hey, you guys need to figure this out? As far as, I mean, you know, we're going to have 500 cars coming and going?
The, the developer can, will work with the city to discuss questions of, of access onto that road and what makes most sense.
Right.
And they'll do a traffic study to, to determine what makes the most sense.
Okay. So?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Steve.
Pigeon Road is also a Techstock roadway. And so Techstock will be involved. I believe the developer's already has initiated contact with Techstock. Traffic impact analysis will, will be required as stated on the, the previous case. And as you mentioned, this is just a conceptual plan. We haven't seen the actual development document yet. And so there will be additional comments from staff once we see that, that submittal specifically relating to the traffic, specifically relating to how we get the sewer to the sanitary sewer lines, specifically related to access points for fire safety and police safety. Again, the municipal services agreement's already been drafted and approved and it was annexed at the previous meeting. Just wanted to make those points.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. So, and I guess y'all wouldn't know how that changes my property rights now that my property butts, butts up to the city that we like?
Well, you are still located in the ETG, so you're, you're still in the county.
Right.
Right.
But now my property line is at the city. So if I want to go out there and side in my deer rifle like I can now and I've got city limits is, is my property line.
I don't know. Steve, do you have a response to that?
No, ma'am. The, the developer or owner of the property exercises right, state, state granted right by local government code, I believe, to voluntary request annexation into the city limits. There was a public hearing on that by the city council at the, I guess that was an April meeting. So the April city council meeting, it was annexed into the city.
Let's, let's hang on.
Yeah, that was going to be my question is,
okay.
I don't think any of us were aware of that.
What, what is the notification range on that, Steve?
I'm sorry?
The notification range, so, so they're saying they did not hear?
It's required to be a 200 foot notification by state statute, I believe.
For the, for the?
Adjacent property.
Right, right.
Before they annexed it, we, we should have?
There, there was a public hearing which? Okay, I, I am?
So who do we talk to about that? I mean, that sounds like it wasn't done properly.
I think you would need to address that with Steve, Mr. Killen. So Steve Killen?
Yeah, Mr. Winfrey, if you would, just contact me after this meeting. Anytime next week, I'm in Austin around Rock until Monday. So if you want to set up a time with me next week, we'd be glad to look into that, make sure that we, we met those requirements.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? All right, yes. Is this Mr. Burns?
Yes, ma'am.
So please state your name, your address.
I'm Mike Burns, 834 FM 2303. And I'm speaking on behalf of Judy Addison, 381 2303. And Casey Harmon's had to go to church, 909 FM 2303. This was the first notice that we ever got of anything, that the meeting for tonight. And, you know, our concerns is, of course, is there's one, one gate going in and out of there. And that's going to create a really bad traffic problem in the mornings. And whoever told them 30 acres is all that was under floodplain there, sold them a bill of goods because I've lived there since 82. And that, that sucker's been across the road and all the way up to the house over there. So whoever sold them that was, but, you know, I just, my ideals on the thing is, you know, we're permanent residents here and they're going to push this in. And I, my house is across the road. And when I sit out the front yard in the evening, I can see the sunset over the trees and not over a tower. You know, I, I, I wanted to live in town, I'd live in town. But it's going to be an increase in traffic and noise and the music center, really, and the crime and, you know, it'll be stray dogs, stray cats, more trash on the roads. And we're going to be losing our, our privacy, you know, because of all the other people and losing our country lifestyle. And I'll be losing sleep at night because of all the noise those people will make. And our water level will be diminished and?
Where they going to get their water?
Well, there's, there's a big, there's a big irrigation well on the backside of that place. Got probably a 12 inch well. And that will, my well is, is two inch well. They'll suck it dry in a week, you know? I mean, that's, and I only have, my well's only 180 foot deep. And so, I mean, seriously, they start using that well and my well will be dry.
Oh, it, it wouldn't, it would be, this would be part of the city infrastructure. They wouldn't be taking well water.
Okay. All right, but they have the well available, but, and anyway, this, Judy said, you know, we're permanent residents. I've been where I'm at right now since 81. And I've paid taxes on that place since 81. And, you know, at that time, it, it sure enough was in the country. There's been a, a lot of additions in, but like their house was here and, and a couple others, you know, that were here. But anyway, this is, this is dramatic change. And, you know, we're permanent residents, permanent property owners, taxpayers and residents. And we're going to be pushed aside and, and not informed of what's going on for the behalf of temporary renters and out of town, out of area developers, you know? And, you know, the biggest thing I'm concerned of too is, is what happens the first time that all floods? What do they do with all that area then and all those houses and lands and everything? And it will, I mean, it will, there's not a doubt in my mind.
We appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Also, I have three acres and there's three entrances.
Do you, do you want to come up and speak? Yeah, please, please state your name and address so we can get you on record.
Judy Addison, it's 381 and 461 FM 2303. But my little acreage there is only three acres, but I had to have three entrances because of the DOT. So how are they going to have one entrance to get 500 people in and out of that?
That city hasn't been done yet, so we don't, we don't know.
Out of that area. I mean, you know, when I had to have three on, you know, what little, little I have, of course, of course, you know, that's going to affect us with the, the music, loud music and the activity, crime, noise, trash, I mean, you know, the whole thing. And we're all business owners, we've been, lived here forever and, you know, residents and taxpayers and, you know, and worked hard for what we've got. And, you know, and then just to have out of town people just come in and, and we were not aware of that council meeting. We were not informed of that. Or we would have been there to oppose it being annexed also. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, ma'am, either of you wish to speak?
I just have two little comments.
And some of them have been briefly addressed. I'm Karen Dickens. We live at 2537 North State Highway 108. We live right in the corner, right behind the feed store. And we have entrances both off of Pigeon Road and off 108. We come down Pigeon Road because on Interstate 108, if you slow down to make a left-hand turn into our drive, the people behind you do not slow down and they go right on around you. So we use that entrance. It's a short distance to the entrance to that rope rain horse where the, the land that they bought. All the cattlemen pulling their trailers come down that road, you're going to have traffic backed up across the bridge because they can't get in and out. There's not enough room. So that's a concern. We've only lived here seven years. We moved from the country in New Mexico to beautiful Stevieville. We love it here. We moved from the desert, we love it here. But we moved to the country because, just like you said, we don't want to live in town. We have horses, we have cattle. We don't want all the, I don't want to sound snooty, but we don't want all the city people around us. We want to live in the country where we can have our animals and we can have our critters and we don't have to worry about all that traffic. On 108, our Pigeon Road, our, they've already taken our fence out twice. And it's going to get worse. And they talk about 500, there's approximately, what I wrote down, 500 houses. There won't be one car per house. It's probably going to be a minimum of two per house. If they have children, it's more than that. But we want to, we moved to the country because we want to be in the country, not because we want a, a small city built beside us, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Kim Winfrey, 615 FM 2303. So again, you know, we bought it a couple of years ago hoping that we were, thinking we were moving to the country. And now this is going to butt, butt up against us. And so what, if you look at the, the way that it's drawn up there, what is going to be next to us? I mean, those pictures, it is beautiful. It's very beautiful. But what's next to us are storage buildings.
And dumpsters.
And dumpsters. That's what's a big part of our property line is going to have, not the beautiful pictures that he's showing. And I, you know, another question I have is, do we have the salaries here in Stevieville to support that many housing? So is it going to become student housing? To, you know, and then that's in and out. As we all know, I have three children that just graduated from college level. But, I mean?
But, I mean, we didn't, you know, buy out in the country to have student housing next to us with storage buildings also against our property. That's what we get to see. And then right next to the storage buildings is the event center. So that's like right there, that we get to hear all the concerts or whatever he said is going to happen. So.
Less than 100 yards from our back porch.
So that's a, you know, we didn't know that that was going to be annexed into the Stevieville city limits. And I know, I just hope that y'all take that into consideration, that what, you know, we bought out in the country and we are all hoping to have that country life. And we love Stevieville. I love Charlton. I'm a Charlton graduate. My husband's a Charlton graduate. You know, and we love the students, but we really don't want a student, 300-something. Well, it'd be more than that because they house more than that, but, you know, 1,000 students living next to us.
Sure.
With the trash.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak?
Well.
Yes, ma'am, come on up, come on up.
I was here earlier and had to run. I had Sunday school, Bible study to teach this evening with the little kids. Probably the same thing you've already heard, I'm sorry.
If you could just say your name and address.
Cassie Hammond, 909 FM 2303. We are on, as it makes an L, we're the last property that butts up against theirs to make that square. We were approached by him at one point to purchase our property because specifically, he said, is that your road? And we said yes, because twice now, they have come through surveying, looking for a road that does not exist down past our house. We, like everybody else, purchased here seven years ago, left a rural area because our family was here, they had moved here. When they purchased the 100 acres around us, nobody ever moved in, nobody ever tried to be part of the community, nobody ever, you know. That's why we all, we moved here, to be with our family, to live in a community of horse people with horse properties, not side-by-side. I didn't get to see the presentations, so I don't know the layout exactly. But I'm sure everybody said the same thing, the floodplains, the traffic, they added pressure on our wells out there. The, there's multiple things that I can think of right off the top of my head that we are not happy about adding 300 homes right behind us, right up to our horses. I, everybody here pitches in, helps out with their horses, helps out with family, and it's just not community. That's, you're gonna destroy the whole idea of community out there.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Well, one thing, I mean, I was like.
I'm sorry, if you could come on, because we've got people on Facebook who listen in and they can't hear.
Okay, I'll need to state my name again.
Please, go ahead.
Judy Addison, 360, 381 and 461 FM 2303. Anyway, I mean, I think, I mean, I've lived here for over 30 years. I've, I'm a Charlton graduate. I'm not, I have nothing against Charlton and, you know, trying to expand for them. But I think Stevieville residents need to be first consideration. We are the taxpayers. We've been here. We're staying here. You know, students and come and go and renters come and go. And so I just think that, you know, we do need to have that balance. But I think that, you know, that citizens, the Stevieville citizens should be the first priority.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. All right, we're good? All right, we're gonna go ahead and close this public hearing. The developers got near full. They heard a lot of concerns. Like I said, this was just a preliminary presentation. So what happens now is they go back and work some more on their, their concept. And then they will come back to us for a rezone request. So I don't know if that'll be next month or the month after that. It kind of just depends on them. So what you're gonna want is to pay attention, you know, letters will go out just like they did this time.
Well, that's the thing.
Okay, okay, so what I want you to do is contact Steve Killen. He's the head of our Community Services, Development and Services. K-I-L-L-E-N. He's the Director of Development Services here at Charlton. And any concerns or complaints you have about that?
And where do we get in touch with him?
He, he's.
My direct number is 214-677-8352. That's my cell number. Desk number is 254-918-1222. My email is S-K-I-L-L-E-N@stevenvilletx.gov.
Could you repeat the email, please?
Could you do the email again, Steve? Thank you. All right, so we are going to wrap up this item. We appreciate you coming. I know, I know it was a very long day. We appreciate you coming, stating your concerns. It's extremely important that we hear from you. And so I thank you for sticking through to 8:02 PM. I know you guys want to go home and get your dinner. I appreciate you being here. We've got one more item on the agenda. You are welcome to stick around. But if you want to, if you want to get out, you know, getting's good. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Still got a big thing left. What are you doing there?
I'm good.
We're gonna go ahead and break for dinner. All right, the last item is a discussion on public hearing of 2050 City of Stevieville Comprehensive Plan. Steve, you still there?
Yes, ma'am. So, thank you, Madam Chair. So the plan, as you know from previous meetings, City Council awarded this funding in 2022. We went out for RFQs, requests for qualifications in December of 2022. There was a review panel of the RFQs that we received and we basically had five firms that responded. The panel narrowed that down to three and then a selection was made by City Council in April of 2023. Leinhardt was secured for these services and we have been working with Leinhardt since that time. One of the first things that Leinhardt did as our consultant for this 2050 plan was they assigned a staff group to work with them directly. And we established an advisory panel for members of the community. That included 26 people. There were four meetings of the advisory panel and three public community events for this project over the past 13 months. And those meetings and public, I guess, community open houses were basically to let the consultant gather input about what the city and our residents want in this plan. And so they gathered that data and have presented it in the document that you have before you tonight. In addition to those community events, you are very well aware that we had recently two public workshops, joint workshops with the Planning and Zoning Commissioners and also our City Council. And so we received input from that. The document's been out on our webpage and we've been soliciting input from the community. And Leinhardt has been, they've established a mechanism to allow us to submit comments back to them. Staff has presented comments back and Leinhardt's been very accommodating. And Madam Chair, where we are at this point, we are basically bringing this before the Planning Commission. This is required by the statute in order to move forward with the adoption of the plan. It has to be reviewed by P and Z and then a recommendation is forwarded to the City Council. City Council will have another public hearing and that will occur in June. And a determination will be made if the 2050 plan is adopted. I believe we have with us tonight representatives from Leinhardt and I believe Ms. Alvy Gilfitt. Abby Amalwes, if you're there, I apologize for never getting your name correct after 13 months. So please forgive me for that, but please, please help me and welcome Ms. Abby tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Abby, go ahead. You got the floor.
All right. Well, I know it's been a long night and I've seen lots of you all through this whole process. And we had some great workshops recently. I do have a slideshow, presentation though, where just like to go over sort of quickly, particularly hit on, and Steve did this as well, but particularly hit on all the public, public workshops that we've had as part of this and all of the input that we've gotten along the way. So go to the next slide. You can go to the next slide as well and the next one. So this was our, this is really our schedule that we had from the beginning. We started off by working with the community through focus group meetings. We toured downtown. We met with a lot of people and in that beginning, we were just listening. And so we heard a whole lot about, we had focus groups on lots of different topics. We toured in cars, we toured walking. And that's where we really worked to set the vision and the goals. That's where we start to understand what are the big challenges, what are the big issues, what are the big opportunities? And start to develop some goals and vision for how to, how to, how to solve those. The next thing we did, we call that really sort of defining the path forward. And that's where we started to look at, we had a workshop where there was a chip exercise and people put out chips in terms of where to grow and how to grow. And then in the winter timeframe, we had prioritizing implementation. So at that point, we had strategy cards on how to address. And we came to the workshop with, you know, 20-plus, almost 30 strategies. And folks really sorted through those and identified the ones that should be prioritized. And we ended up with what we really wanted was a group of strategies and implementation steps that were doable. They were a handful that the community can really tackle. And I think we got there. And now we're here in the spring for public hearings and adoption meetings. If you go to the next. This is our process and, you know, we start by setting up project management plans, really understanding who to talk to, when. We understand as much as we can about the community. We go into create and we create solutions. And now we're here in sharing. And this is where we've packaged that final document now. You can go to the next. So I've talked a little bit about, and Steve touched on this advisory committee. So a really great group of people that we worked with throughout the process. And representatives from Stevieville ISD, Chamber of Commerce, Charlton State, so Main Street, Business Community. We really had a great representation of Stevieville on that committee. These were the big touchpoints. So in the beginning there, when we were doing that goal setting, that's where we were here all day. We had site visit, focus groups, advisory committee meetings. We've had advisory committee meetings before every big public event to make sure that we were sort of hitting the right topics and working with the committee to tweak that message and make sure we were asking the right questions as well. I think I covered most of these. We can go to the next one. Yeah, like I said, I've talked through this already, but we can kind of keep going through. This was a lot of what we heard at the beginning, you know, more support for emergency services, more opportunities to bring people to Stevieville, events, bring large numbers of visitors, not enough lodging. So that was something we heard. More support needed for infrastructure and services as the population grows. Quality housing. Housing was something we talked about a whole lot throughout this process. You've heard it tonight for sure. Housing for residents as well as housing for Charlton State as it continues to grow. And then transportation was another thing we talked about a lot. This first public meeting, it was really about us presenting a lot of what we had heard. But we also had some exercises there. We call them sort of participatory budgeting. So everybody's got a certain number, number of, you know, dollars and they put their dollars where, you know, if you were mayor for the day, where would you put your dollars? And so street maintenance was something that was really a place people wanted to put their money. Go to the next. Then this defining a preferred path for, path forward, this was a really fun exercise where people really were planning. And so we had, you'll see in the future land use map, we've got several different land use categories. And they all represent, each one of the chips that people got represented a certain number of residents. They were all scaled to the acre, so each one represented 10 acres. And you could put a certain number of residents within that 10 acres, certain number of jobs, certain number of dwelling units. And we had targets. So each table was trying to reach 41,000 residents. And what that is, is it's about three to four times the number of new residents that you're expecting from now to 2050. So you want a plan for more people on your maps than are coming because you don't know where they're coming. So you've got to make sure that you're planning for enough on your maps to support that. So. Yeah, we did have five tables. This was at the next one, the implementation meeting. And this was really about, this is also a great opportunity for us to hear and for people to talk to each other about all the great things that are already happening and going on. And I think you'll see that as you get into the strategies and starting to move towards implementation, is that a lot of these strategies are things that the community's already working on. By getting them into this comprehensive plan, you really start to organize the effort towards that. You bring all of the parties to the table. And so that's what was helpful about this activity is that we were able to hear, you know, oh, you know, and we're talking about Harbin Drive and like, oh, there's already all of these initiatives that are going towards that area of town. Charlton's working on it from this perspective. The city's working on it from this perspective. There's a TERF setup. There are all of these things. And so then we can really refine that strategy and actions for next steps. And then I'll quickly go over just a high level of this document. These are the goals. Housing supply being one of the ones that we heard about the most and that is, we're really focusing on a lot in this plan. With that, expanding and diversifying the housing supply so that it meets the needs of all ages, abilities, households and income levels. So that's, you know, really understanding student housing, where it should go, how it should be placed in the city, as well as all of the housing that's needed for permanent and long-term residents. Community here, no, that's okay. That's okay. I think we've got all, I know you guys have had a long night. Population projections for this, what we do is we look at trend population and we project that out. But we also look at and use organizations like the Texas Water Development Board. So we have a lot of different methods that we go about trying to project population to 2050. We shared all of these during some of those initial work sessions. We worked on this a lot with the advisory committee as well. And came up with this number, 32,200 in 2050. These are projections, so it's probably not right. But it's, it's, I think, a number that the advisory committee felt comfortable with and staff felt comfortable with as a, as a good projection for the future. Go to the next one. These are all of the policy statements. I'm definitely not gonna read these. But I think what's important for you all is that what you'll start to see moving forward is that as different zoning application requests come forward, different capital improvement projects, when you're starting to look at the CIP each year, you'll want to be looking back at these policy statements. You'll probably start to see these in staff reports. How, how do, how do these zoning applications or CIP, capital improvement, budget, those sorts of things as they come for you, come before you? How are they meeting these policies? So that's how these policy statements will be used. Then you've got maps. You've got a, what's called a growth sectors map. And what that really does is it looked at and mapped where is the infrastructure currently in the city? Where is it planned for the future but maybe not yet existing? And where are there really no plans even, you know, to extend infrastructure to? And that's mostly what makes up this map. One of the reasons for that is that fiscal sustainability is something that was really important to the city when we came on. It's something that we've talked about a lot with the advisory committee. As communities start to spread and grow, you start to take on a lot more responsibility. Even though developers pay for the infrastructure, once it goes to put it in place, most of the time, they'll pay for that initial infrastructure. Cities then take that on and have to maintain it in the future. And you think of the timeframe for infrastructure is typically about 30 years. So that is installed now, 30 years down the line. You can think of pretty much almost replacing that again from city, city taxpayer dollars really goes into replacing that again. And so you want to make sure that the development that is going in there is paying for itself so that it's bringing enough money in that it could actually. itself, so that it's bringing enough money in that it could actually replace that infrastructure 30 years down the line. So we talked a lot about that. We talked about different development patterns that lead to being able to pay for that infrastructure down the line. Um, in terms of what, we've got a future land use map that then says, okay, we know where you'd want to grow, um, and then the future land use map starts to say what types of growth should happen in those places. We've got a thoroughfare plan map that supports that, so how do you, um, have transportation that supports that? And then also really looking at where are those targeted employment areas? Um, and so these are areas that you want to think about, how do we preserve that space in the long term for large employment and large employers? And so things you'd want to think about in those bubbles is like, you know, you don't want to put a bunch of single-family housing in there, uh, because that won't be compatible with some future plans for, for industrial. And then, uh, implementation strategies. Next slide. Um, I talked through this, so you can go, you can skip through it, but this is the growth sectors map that talks about sort of where is it appropriate for what type of development? Next one. This is the future land, land use map. I'll just hit on this one. You've got activity centers, which are called your town center. Those are the red, um, and that's where you should expect to see the most sort of dense type of development. These are also the places where you could potentially, particularly those that are close to campus, uh, that you would want to see some purpose-built student housing, um, and could also be good opportunities for incorporating that in a way that also adds and starts to help create those more sort of dense activity centers. Um, maybe you've got retail on the ground floor, nice sidewalks and things like that. Uh, the community core are really the areas where, uh, you would want to see primarily residential, but also some commercial, uh, certainly along, particularly along corridors. Um, but you'd want to see like, you know, maybe a little bit higher density than just single-family home in that community core, different types of housing. Um, complete neighborhoods are sort of, you can see that's that yellow that kind of goes all the way around. There are some areas that you've already got development, you've already got fairly traditional single-family neighborhoods, um, and then there are other areas that are undeveloped. And so what you want in those complete neighborhoods is you really want to make sure that you're creating a complete neighborhood as you spread out, um, into other undeveloped areas of town, uh, so that people aren't all having to drive and, and, uh, use up those resources. You also want to make sure those are areas that, that develop in a fiscally sustainable manner so that they support themselves in the future. And then you've got rural and open space. Next. Uh, transportation master, thoroughfare plan. Uh, we talked about this at the work session too. There were questions about, uh, transportation. One thing that, uh, we did is we actually worked a lot with staff, um, and made sure that the roads are in this thoroughfare plan, um, particularly right-of-way, uh, requests and asks are, are reasonable and make sense. So collector roads typically are, you know, if you're building a new collector road in the city and that's built into here, so if there's a road that's being extended or built, you would build that to a typical collector size, 70 to 90 feet. But in your town, you have a lot of collector roads where you only have 50 feet of right-of-way. Prior comprehensive plan that caught, or prior thoroughfare plan that was causing some challenges with staff is that those roads were also set to be 70, uh, or 90 feet of right-of-way, but you just couldn't get it. So you, you'll see in this plan is, um, a, a difference between roads that are already built out and roads that would be added. Next. Uh, talked already about, uh, employment centers and targeted employment, preserving those for, for those uses in the future. And then next slide. And then implementation. And this is where we've got, um, projects, so that's shovels in the ground, that's, you know, intersections, uh, dangerous intersections, things like that. There's programs, um, those are sort of one-time, or they can be ongoing programs that sort of, um, you know, uh, that are put in place primarily by the city, but they can also be programs that are partnerships, uh, with different organizations. Um, and then you have policies. So these are all the types of recommendations that are within that implementation, um, strategies. And for each one of these, we've got sort of specific action steps. Uh, we've got, you know, is this a short-term, long-term, midterm type of thing? How much investment does each one take? What are some funding tools? Are there grant opportunities? Um, are there other levels of government that can fund those? And then where are those partnership opportunities? So for each one of those strategies, you'll see that broke down. Uh, and this is what that looks like. And that's all I have, so I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Abby.
Yeah.
Questions? Well, I know it's been a long night for you too, and I imagine you have a long road home, so...
I'm actually staying in town, so...
Oh, good. Okay. I'm glad for you.
Yeah.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, guys.
So no questions. We're good. Thank you so much.
Great.
All right. Um, well, we'll go ahead and, um, open this up to a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this comprehensive plan? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners.
I guess I didn't stand up.
Oh, Bruce, did, did you? Come on, I'll open the public hearing again.
Okay. I, Bruce Delator, 1595 Glenwood. I just have some questions. There seems to be, and this is not always under P and Z purview, but, uh, this question occurred to me back several years ago when we were discussing the setup of SEDA, and I think that goes into, uh, this plan. I don't see any benchmarks. How do we know we've won? How do we know that we have been successful in what we have set out to do? I've never seen anybody address that particular issue, and I think that issue needs to be addressed better. And, uh, you know, I, I looked in one of these pages and, uh, on the WELT index, we are at 43 when national average is 100. That means we're a poor community. Is one of our objectives to increase median income? Is our objective to increase, uh, land ownership or, uh, increase in land ownership? Is our objective to actually increase our population, or is that just a side effect of it? What, what, what's our real objective? I mean, there's, there's people in this town that don't want any growth at all. They like the town as it is. So, uh, I don't happen to be one of them. I think we should do economic development, but how do we measure it? I think that, I think that's probably the major question that needs to be answered.
All right. Thank you, Bruce.
Sure.
We appreciate it. Closing the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion and then we can discuss.
I move that we recommend the council approval of the comprehensive plan for 2050.
Second.
Any need to discuss? Bruce, I think your questions are excellent and rhetorical, and you should bring them up to the council. Um, other than that, let's, let's vote. Uh, all in favor of recommending to council, uh, approval of this, uh, new comprehensive plan, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Well, we've been very unanimous tonight.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, uh, three, almost three hours. Is that a record? It might be a record.
Yes, I think it is a record.
For council, yeah.
Thank you, everyone.